Hey, welcome. My name is Tony Doan, the State Building Code Council Chair. I will be the SBCC's designated hearing officer today and will be conducting this hearing. I now call to order this hearing regarding WAC 5150, adoption and amendment of the 2021 International Building Code Structural Provisions and the 2021 International Existing Building Code. WAC 5151 Adoption and Amendment of the 2021 International Residential Code. WAC 5152 Adoption and Amendment of the 2021 International Mechanical Code and the 2021 International Fuel Gas Code. WAC 5155 Adoption and Amendment of the 2021 Washington State Wildland Urban Interface Code. WAC 5156 Adoption and Amendment of the 2021 Uniform Plumbing Code. WAC 5111R Adoption and Amendment of the 2021 Washington State Energy Code Residential Provisions. I would like to advise everyone that this hearing is being recorded and the audio file will become part of the official rulemaking file. For the record, this hearing is being held on October 14th, 2022, beginning at 10:07 a.m. at 1500 Jefferson Street, Olympia, Washington, with Zoom and teleconference options. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments on revisions to WAC 5150 International Building Code Structural Provisions and International Existing Building Code. WAC 5151 International Residential Code. WAC 5152 International Mechanical Code and International Fuel Gas Code. WAC 5155 New Washington State Wildland Urban Interface Code. WAC 5156 Uniform Plumbing Code and WAC 5111R Washington State Energy Code Residential Provisions. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, RCW 42.30 and the Administrative Procedures Act, RCW 34.05. Legal notice that this hearing was filed with the Washington State Code Reviser on August 23rd, 2022. The Washington State Register Number for WAC 5150 is WSR 2217151. The Washington State Register Number for WAC 5151 is WSR 22174148. The Washington State Register Number for WAC 5152 is WSR 2217147. The Washington State Register Number for WAC 5155 is WSR 2217150. The Washington State Register Number for WAC 5156 is WSR 2217153. The Washington State Register Number for WAC 5111R is WSR 2217149. Notice that this hearing was also posted on the SBC CC website at sbcc.wa.gov. This hearing is being held to consider testimony on the proposed CR 102. At this time, I will briefly explain the proposed changes. For the 2021 IBC Structural, the council received seven proposals. The IBC's Technical Advisory Group recommended approval of five proposals as submitted or as modified. Three proposals have already been approved with the group I codes or group one codes. The council recommended filing the proposed rules to allow input through the public hearing process. For the 2021 IEBC, the council received 11 proposals. The IBC Technical Advisory Group recommended approval of 10 proposals as submitted or as modified. One proposal was withdrawn by the proponent. The council recommended filing the proposed rule to allow input through the public hearing process. For the 2021 IRC, the council received 13 proposals. The IRC and IMC Technical Advisory Groups recommended approval of 10 proposals as submitted or as modified. The council recommended the proposed rule with one additional proposal added to the recommended packet to allow input through the public hearing process. For the 2021 Uniform Plumbing Code, the council received six proposals. The UPC Technical Advisory Group recommended approval of three proposals as submitted or as modified. The council recommended filing the proposed rule with four proposals to allow input through the public hearing process. For the 2021 IMC IFGC, the council received 15 proposals. The IMC Technical Advisory Group recommended approval of 13 proposals as submitted or as modified. The council recommended filing the proposed rule to allow input through the public hearing process. For the 2021 Wildland Urban Interface Code, the council received three proposals. The WUWE Technical Advisory Group recommended approval of one proposal as submitted or as modified. The council recommended filing the proposed rule with three proposals to allow input through the public hearing process. For the 2021 WSCCR, the council received 44 proposals. The Energy Code Technical Advisory Group recommended approval of 28 proposals as submitted or as modified. The council recommended filing the proposed rule with one additional proposal to correlate the simulated performance path with the proposals for heat pumps, space, and water heating. There are a few instances where options are provided based on the approval of other recommended proposals. At this time, I'm going to go over some things to keep in mind during the public testimony today. All testimony should be brief, concise, and honest. Speakers should address their comments to matters pertinent to the code, proposals, or subject matter at hand. Avoid reading lengthy written testimony. Instead, orally highlight important points in the written report. If others are offering similar testimony, try to coordinate information to avoid repetition. Simply stating an agreement with the points raised by prior speakers will help move the hearing along so that all who wish to speak will have the opportunity to do so within a reasonable time. Large groups whose members wish to speak are encouraged to designate a spokesperson. There will be no questions and comments by council members. If you must give a personal opinion, make sure that the council understands that you are not speaking for an organization but for yourself. If proposing a modification of the material being discussed, please be prepared to follow up with comments in writing. These are the items that will not be allowed. No disruption of the orderly conduct of the public hearing will be tolerated. The speakers and audience shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, disruptive outbursts, applause, protests, engaging in disruptive conversation, speaking out of turn, preventing or attempting to prevent others who have the floor from speaking or other conduct which disrupts or interferes with the orderly conduct of the hearing. Personal attacks on the council members, staff, or members of the public are out of order. It is not appropriate in the public hearing for a speaker to debate a matter under consideration with other speakers, the audience, or members of the council. Engaging in such conduct and failing to cease upon requests will be grounds for ending a speaker's time at the podium or for removal of any disruptive person from the meeting room. For those that are on Zoom, please be sure to turn your camera on. Last time, we did not have that feature in place. This time, we do. So please utilize the camera and turn the camera on if you are testifying on Zoom. If you are in person to my right here, you'll take a seat at the chair here at the head of the table and come up and do your testimony. The timer will be set for two minutes. I will notify at 30 seconds. You have 30 seconds remaining. Once you hear the beeper go off, that is the end of your testimony. We will be taking a break today at 12 o'clock from 12 o'clock to 12:10. That's going to move our public hearing time from 10 a.m. to 2:10. So that is the proposed time for the public hearing today. We will now hear oral testimony regarding the proposed changes. For the record, please identify yourself and whom you represent, if any. Please speak clearly so we can get a good recording of your testimony in order to ensure that everyone has a chance to make comments in a timely manner. Please limit your comments to two minutes. Okay, we have Jesse Simmons. Welcome. Your time starts now.
Good morning, members of the State Building Codes Council. My name is Jesse Simmons. I am the Government Affairs Director for Olympia Master Builders. We represent nearly 500 members associated with the local building industry. These are international developers. They're not even national developers. They're local builders trying to provide stability for both them and their neighbors. As you've heard previously and probably will hear again today, our concerns around our concerns with these code changes are centered around the issue of affordability. So since you've heard all the statistics and numbers before, instead, I'm going to tell you a little bit about my experience. So I served this country for about eight years in the United States Army. And a significant amount of that time, my family has called this community home. My kids have grown up here and they've made lifelong friends here. I too have become connected to this community and my neighbors. I left the Army in 2014 and we decided as a family to stay here and continue to call Washington home. I was able to work hard and buy a house. The cost of that house, which I might add, is about half of what it is appraised for today. So I was fortunate to be able to use the VA loan and able to not have to put any money down to buy my house. I, like thousands of others who have come before me and left military service to call this community home, was able to afford to become part of this community. My kids are attending local schools. I've become involved in local politics. I've managed campaigns. I've donated thousands to local nonprofits. And I've tried my best to give back to this community where I can. My fear and my fear is, and I believe that what professionals in the building industry are trying to tell you, is that you will price people like me and my family out of this community and out of this state. Most homes now go for around a half a million dollars in this state. So I ask, is it really time to be weighing whether people like myself deserve to live here with your desire to be first in green energy? Thank you.
Just for clarification, we've started the public testimony on WAC 5150 IBC Structural. My apologies for not clarifying that. Forrest Wilson? Forrest, your time starts now.
Okay. Thank you for taking the time today. My name is Forrest Wilson. I'm a Marine Corps veteran and owner of Top Solid Surface. We fabricate and install quartz, granite, and porcelain surfaces, such as countertops, showers, stuff like that. We currently employ 27 people in Thurston County. We used to employ more, but over the past year, we lost two good, experienced employees who were forced to leave the area due to the egregiously high cost of living. While I'm sure that these new code requirements were created with the best of intentions, the timing for implementation could not possibly be worse. We've got inflation on the horizon, war with Ukraine, a looming recession, and a homelessness issue that won't go away. Coming from Kansas, I can tell you that I never drove by two to three homeless encampments every single day during my commute. This is a Washington State problem created by us and solvable by us. These new energy requirements will increase homelessness and make Washington State less competitive against the red states, which are pro housing. I will lose more employees to the Sun Belt and we will all lose more knowledgeable workers to cheaper and better climates. If you implement these new energy code requirements, you will be adding further to the cost of building new homes. And what we really need is common sense densification zoning to protect the environment, not luxury, single-family home plots, which only the wealthy Teslerati's can afford due to a litany of code additions. I believe that you can both love the outdoors and love your fellow human being. You can choose to implement a scarcity mindset. More rules, more restrictions, more costs. Or you can encourage an abundance mindset. One is good for Washington State and encourages continued economic growth. One puts our state on a path of decline. My challenge and my question to the committee is, what code or zoning requirements will you be sunsetting or outright removing to make room for these new code requirements so that we can offset these new building costs and house more people? Thank you.
Okay, so just for clarification, this is for the IBC Structural. So if you are tested, if you are signed up under the IBC Structural, but you are testifying on the energy code, then we need some sort of notification that you should be on the other list. So just so we're all on the same page. Kai first.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Your time starts now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. First, let me thank you, say thank you to the State Building Code Council for providing me the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Kai First. I'm a local builder and owner of First Finishers. I've been in the building industry for the last 23 years and my company currently employs 45 people who are all part of this community. Our company builds mostly in Thurston and Pierce County. We build custom homes and develop properties for multifamily projects. That is why I'm testifying here today. I already see my employees, my neighbors being priced out of my community. And as a local builder with focus on residential, I'm passionate about my work. I'm passionate about providing housing options that are both high quality.
We lost you, Kai. Kai, are you there? Can you hear me now? Now I can hear you. Go ahead. Your time will resume.
I'm not sure where I got lost there. I'm passionate about my work and passionate about providing housing options that are both high quality and affordable. The proposed code changes this council is considering will not allow me to do that. To compensate for the added costs to my business, I will need to impose several changes as well. I'll need to either sacrifice quality or build or price to build housing. I do not believe in sacrificing quality. So of course, the price is going to go up for my clients. I'll need to compete hard for the required materials to ensure I maintain the quality of our product.
Okay, I think we lost Kai. For the record, Kai, if you could submit your written testimony by 5 o'clock today for the record. And that way, it's on the record. We're having trouble with your testimony coming through.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure what's going on. I'll submit it in writing. Sorry.
Thank you, Kai. Appreciate it. Allison Butcher? Allison? If you're on Zoom, when I call on you, if you could, please use the raise hand function. So you go to the top and then we can find you quicker. And then we'll be able to navigate that a little more efficiently. So Allison Butcher? Okay. Mike Patterson? Mike Patterson? Mike Patterson?
You should be able to unmute, Mike.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes, your time starts now.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Mike Patterson, representing the Master Builders Association of King and Snohomish Counties. For brevity, I'll begin by saying we agree with testimony provided by members of the Olympia Master Builders Association in a previous hearings by the Building Industry Association of Washington and their written testimony. First of all, like most, we want a cleaner, more sustainable Washington. Master Builders Association has been a pioneer in the development of our Built Green Program. However, we believe these proposed changes must be made more incrementally and more thoughtfully. While we're making progress on decarbonization, we're going the opposite direction on our housing goals. We're woefully underproducing needed housing inventory and costs are ever increasing. We haven't faced this much uncertainty in housing since the 2008 housing crisis. And in fact, I can tell you that hardly a day goes by when a planning director or other planning professional, as they look ahead to staffing, wonder how they should be staffing up for next year. They don't know if they should be even keeping staff that they have or making other adjustments. We are clearly in a period of great uncertainty. And this package of updates only makes that uncertainty greater and exacerbates our housing challenge. I can tell you from personal experience, we're very concerned about infrastructure and ability to support these changes. I meet with our utility districts regularly and they're rationing transformers, which stops housing construction. So in my final moments, I urge you to proceed thoughtfully and please balance the needs of housing. Thank you.
That's your time. Thank you. Okay, so when I call on you, I'm going to confirm that your testimony is to the testimony that is titled that we're on. And right now, again, we are on WAC 5150 IBC Structural. So if you are not doing testimony on that, on that WAC, then I'm going to ask that you move it to the appropriate. Because for the record, this gets confusing. And so we need to be testifying on the appropriate code cycle that we're on.
I mean, the next one, he wants to be on the energy code. So again, the last one that's on your list is for the energy code.
It is. Okay. All right. Mike, apologize if I mess up the last name, Nightcream. We're going to move you over to the energy code.
And if I could, a procedural issue, if you could announce the next three names in order so people can be ready to queue up, it'd really be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. They are on the screen. So we're showing the list on the screen and you can see who is the next one.
Yeah.
Are you able to see the screen from there?
Yeah.
Perfect. Perfect. Good deal.
So if you could do an announcement. And then people on the Zoom, they realize you do.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, is there anyone else who has any public testimony for WAC 5150 IBC Structural? Any hands raised over there, Dustin? On the, on the Zoom?
I don't see anyone.
Okay. Okay, with that, we'll move to WAC 5150 IEBC. Again, if your testimony does not relate to the International Existing Building Code, we would like to move you to the appropriate testimony section. So we have Jesse Simmons. You're good?
Yeah.
Forrest Wilson?
Good.
Good? Kai first? Is this? Same? Allison Butcher? Allison's not there. Chris Edmark?
I'm here.
Hi, Chris. So are you testifying on the International Existing Building Code?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you. Your time starts now, Chris.
Okay, we are proposing a modification to the proposal 21 GP 2029 to change the definition for substantial damage and substantial improvement. The use of the building code valuation table requires modifiers based on jurisdictions and cost to administer the code. The value will fluctuate from year to year and does not take into consideration the actual value based on the actual market. Since it varies from area to area and from structure to structure. Okay, this conflicts with the guidance provided by FEMA as it does not account for the depreciation of the structure. And I'm going to provide some written testimony and the information from FEMA 213. FEMA provides three ways to make the determination estimates, the assessor values, and those based on the professional judgment of a local official. As a CRS Class II jurisdiction, which Thurston County is, we adhere to the requirements of FEMA to retain our Class II rating with the higher regulatory standards. We would be out of compliance using this method. The local assessor can provide current market information as modifiers and based on the market times the condition of the structure since they go out there and look at them. Using the building valuation data will hurt the areas where homes are valued higher or the cost of administration is lower. The scope of the IEBC does not cover structures under the International Residential Code and will cause jurisdictions to administer the determination of substantial damage and substantial improvement separately.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, so you can see the verbiage that FEMA has. And basically, there's three ways. I really think that it's important for jurisdictions to have options so that we can comply with the FEMA requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Nightcream? Natalie Bohold? Natalie, can you hear me? Can you be able to unmute?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Your time starts right now.
Okay, great. Yeah, my name is Natalie Bohold. I represent the Washington Association of Building Officials Technical Code Development Committee. And we submitted a proposal 056, 21 GP 2056 on voluntary lateral force assisting system alterations that was approved by the State Building Code Council. And today, I'm here to present a public comment to make some modifications to it. The modification, the public comment clarifies the applicability of the proposal and overall improves it. It doesn't not change its original intent. It reflects comments heard from the ICC Committee during the April 2022 Committee Action Hearings in Rochester, New York, and includes as well another IEBC proposal, EB68, that was, that will be incorporated in the 2024 IEBC. The ICC Committee had feedback about the location of the proposed change as an exception as well as a proposed change being possibly too broad. So in response with this public comment, we're making some changes that are identical in both sections 50313 and 805.4. The text is being moved out of the exception into paragraph two, specifically section 2.1. And we added the words "where approved."
Thirty seconds.
All right, "where approved." This gives a chance to the code official to review and determine if the proposed lateral design is reasonable. And the public comment also adds section 212 as a criterion for when this flexibility can be used, which is basically to provide deformation compatibility. Thank you for hearing my public comment.
Thank you. Is there any other public testimony on the International Existing Building Code? Anything there? Okay, at this time, we'll go to WAC 5151, the International Residential Code. And first up, we have Jesse Simmons. Forrest Wilson? Good? We have Martha Baskin. Martha Baskin, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Kai first? Allison Butcher? Lisa Parsley? Okay, you should be able to unmute your mic.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Your time starts now. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you for having me. I am Olympia City Council member. I am here to urge you to adopt the proposed energy code updates, especially the requirements for heat pumps and increased ventilation to gas stoves. Because we have to.
I'm going to ask you to move your public testimony to when we get to the energy code. If that's what you're testifying on.
Yeah, I thought that's what I had got moved to. Sorry.
We'll move you over to the energy code and we'll call on you when we get to that section.
Fantastic. You get to hear it again.
Okay, thank you. Just quickly, Dustin, are you able to move those over? Okay, excellent. Thank you. We have Andrea Smith. Andrea, your time starts now.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. For the record, my name is Andrea Smith. I'm here today on behalf of the Building Industry Association of Washington. We are a trade association of about 8,000 members across the state that represents every aspect of the residential construction industry. We are here today requesting the SBCC to remove section A AF 104.1 from the appendix AF, which covers radon testing requirements. We'd like to see this withdrawn until a task force, radon specialists and builders can get together and discuss the best path forward. The main issue with this section is the prescriptive nature of the language. And our builder members and their radon specialists would like to see language that addresses the unusually high nature of radon in homes in the Spokane area specifically, but they'd like to see more clear performance-based language that takes into consideration the square footage of a home and any radon mitigation systems installed. That is it for our testimony on the IRC. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anjali Grant?
Hi, this is Anjali Grant.
Starts now, thank you.
Okay, State Senate Bill 5237 was passed in April 2021. Section 313 of that gives the Department of Children, Youth and Families, or DCYF, flexibility to waive the 12 child limit on family home childcare. This was made effective in July 2021. Per this ruling, assessment for the larger limit will be based at a minimum on square footage and staffing capabilities. I respectfully request that the Building Code Council convene a working group to create and codify some expectations around egress, fire, life safety and accessibility so that this law can be evaluated and potentially implemented in a way that protects the health, safety and welfare of children in care. This would not supplant DCYF regulations, but supplement them. The intent of the legislation was to expand access to childcare at a time of crisis. However, it is in conflict with the state building codes, which define family home childcare as serving no more than 12 children. I'm an architect that works with many childcare providers, mostly in a commercial setting under the IBC. I'm working with a family home provider within a municipal preschool program who's caught in the middle. Based on the IRC, she cannot have more than 12 children in her home. DCYF regulations state the opposite.
Thirty seconds.
This conflict puts providers at risk and creates confusion. Per the RCWs, cities and counties cannot diminish the health and life safety provisions of the state building code. So the state code is the right place to begin this work. I would be happy to serve on such a group as a technical volunteer. That's my testimony.
Thank you. David Gerard? It should be unmuted as well. David, you should be able to unmute. David, are you there?
It shows he's unmuted. I'm just.
David, we're not hearing you. We're going to go to the next one and I'll come right back to you. Jennifer Thomas? Micah? Please silence all phones.
I'm here now. I, I think that my testimony relates to the energy code instead of the IRC integrator capacity. You move me to the energy code instead.
Okay, that's what we'll do, Jennifer. Thank you. Micah, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt. Could you verify, are we given testifiers two minutes? The signup sheet says three minutes, so could you make that announcement so folks could adjust their testimony accordingly?
We made that announcement right at the beginning in the.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure because it, you know, it seems like we're cutting folks off and I think they were prepared for the three minutes, even if we made that announcement, we should re-verify. Thanks. I didn't hear the announcement, so I, sorry, I missed it.
You're good. Thanks, Micah. Okay, David Gerard?
He tells he's unmuted.
David, we're having difficulty with your audio coming through. We're not, we're not able to hear you. We'll come back to you and see if we can get this working at a later time. And we got Jennifer moved over to energy.
Yes.
Excellent.
I want to go to energy as well.
Mike's on energy also. Okay, is there anything further for the, any further public testimony for the International Residential Code?
You have Ardell Halla.
Oh, I didn't see that one. Oh, sorry. Ardell Halla? My apologies.
Hi, this is Ardell.
Hi, Ardell. We can hear you. Your two minutes starts now.
My name's Ardell Jala, representing Wabo Technical Code Development. This proposed code change takes appendix chapter J of existing buildings and structures of the 2021 IRC and moves it into the body of the IRC as a new chapter 44. Our goal with this change is to maintain a one-stop-shop vision of the IRC. Across the country, jurisdictions can use appendix J, but that appendix is not adopted in, by our Washington State Residential Code. There is also an option to design existing residential buildings using the I E B C, but we want applicants to be able to stay within the IRC. Code standards for existing buildings are needed in the body of the Residential Code. In addition, more reasonable standards are needed for residential buildings that were built decades ago to allow for non-compliant windows, ceiling heights and stairs to continue to be reused. Considering that many of these spaces and these buildings are being used as habitable spaces already, it's preferable to adopt reasonable standards to give a break on existing construction from full compliance so we can continue to allow use of these spaces in a safe manner. The proposed edits to CR 102 incorporate pre-adoption of several structural public comments that were reviewed and approved last month at the 2024 Public Comment Hearings in Louisville. These proposals cover changes to structural provisions for existing buildings for additions and alterations, a roofing trigger for seismic bracing of unreinforced masonry parapets, provisions for change of use, and a clarification of foundation requirements when an existing building is effectively demolished. Public comment also strikes pointers to electrical chapters in the model code since Washington State has its own electrical code and does not adopt those chapters. Finally, this public comment modifies those proposals for local use as we have moved all existing building provisions from appendix J to chapter 44, and it is intended to completely replace the previous proposals 21 GP 2053 and 21 GP 2053R. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dave, I see you on the screen. Maybe we can get your microphone to work. No, we're still not able to hear you. Okay, we'll leave you, we'll leave you untracked and then we'll, we'll try back another time. Is there any further public testimony on the International Residential Code? Okay, at this time, we're going to go to. We're going to go to WAC 5156 Uniform Plumbing Code. And Jesse Simmons? Forrest Wilson? Kai?
I don't see Allison Butcher.
Allison Butcher? Steve Simpson?
Yes. Yes.
You have two minutes and it starts now.
Hey, thank you. Good morning. Thank you. My name is Steve Simpson. I'm representing Seattle Area Pipe Trades. I'll be speaking in opposition to law 21 GP 2-057. Thank you for taking your time this morning to listen to my testimony. I've also submitted my written comments. There are several key factors to my opposition to this amendment. Under the WAC and RCWs that allow us to amend these codes, none of these have been met with this proposal. The proponent checked the box. The amendment clarifies the intent or application of this code. The air admittance valve is not in the UPC code, therefore how can we clarify the intent or application if it doesn't exist in the model code? I sit on the plumbing tag and I asked your director about the requirements of the WAC and RCW and replied, "All those requirements, we wouldn't have any amendments." The RCW also clearly requires the proponent to have a detailed economic analysis. No such analysis was provided to the tag or this council. Your proponent checked the no impact reasoning for this was it's an optional component. I disagree with this statement, only it considers the plumbing contractor. It does not look at the end users, small businesses, building owners and building occupants. The air admittance valve is a mechanical device. I have a cutaway of it here. I probably don't know if you can see it online. Apologize about that. Mechanical devices, they fail. They leak sewer gases.
Thirty seconds.
They're highly toxic gases. They, this needs to be replaced. They fail. And once again, that would cost serious amounts of money up to the $400 to $600 range. The health impacts of the building occupants and these devices are installed and failed adversely impact this amendment would allow these devices in any building type. Do we really want these devices in hospitals, nursing homes and other places where compromised people are using these buildings? The way this amendment's been filed adds to confusion.
That's your time. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to speak to the energy codes.
Okay, we'll move you over. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Micah Chappell? Your time starts now.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, point of order. Mike is a sitting council member. He shouldn't be speaking on his, his submittal.
We, we verified that with our attorney this morning. Based on the information we got from the Assistant Attorney General, he is allowed to speak.
Micah, go ahead. Your time starts now.
All right, that would be a new one. If I wasn't allowed to speak, I've been on the council before and have proposals submitted. And of course, this represents a group. So Micah Chappell, representing Wabo, Washington Association of Building Officials Technical Code Development Committee. You know, this proposal for the air admittance valves was submitted as going into the body of the code. And at the tag, where the tag stands for Technical Advisory Group, they refused to even discuss the technical merits of this proposal. Their argument was based on how it was submitted and what was submitted. However, you know, we, we adopt the international codes as a series, International Building Code, Residential Code. The only thing we don't adopt is the International Plumbing Code. Air admittance valves are part of the International Plumbing Code. And as code officials, we regularly get requests from plumbers and plumbing groups to allow air admittance valves to be installed in new construction, old construction. And so we wanted to provide technical guidance for the code officials to say, yes, you can do this here or not here or where. Just to provide additional information to the code officials to approve these. So when we got to the BFP Committee, we decided that it was best maybe to put this in an appendix so a jurisdiction can adopt this if they feel they want to use that, which could be allowed now. A jurisdiction can go in and adopt code language on their own to allow air admittance valves. We thought an appendix would be fine. The intent for this code is to provide, for this code change is to provide a code path for the alternate request. Again, this is part of the IBC, the International Plumbing Code, and is used all around the country. We didn't see it as a problem being in an appendix for jurisdictions to provide technical guidance. And we support, we urge your support of this proposal. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any further testimony for the Uniform Plumbing Code? Margo Hill?
Yeah.
Okay, Margo, Margo Hill?
I'm actually on the proposed energy code.
Okay. Right. Anyone else for the Uniform Plumbing Code for public testimony?
We only have one on the IMC, Lisa Parsley. She wasn't. He was put in the wrong spot.
The rest are all. Is, is David Gerard still on? No. Okay, I was going to try him. We'll come back to that. Okay, we'll go to WAC 5152, International Mechanical Code and International Fuel Gas Code. And for that, who did you say we have on that?
Lisa Parsley.
Okay. So the ones we have listed, Jesse, Forrest, Kai, Allison, Mike are all energy?
Allison hasn't been here, but they're all of her signups and the rest have requested energy.
Energy.
And Lisa Parsley was a combination of energy code and mechanical residential code.
Okay. Did she speak on the?
She was the Olympia City Council member that was on the IRC list.
Is she speaking to IRC though?
She's speaking to the stove ventilation portion in both the IRC and the IMC and then also had mentioned the heat pumps from the energy code.
Okay.
Moved her to energy.
Okay, well, well, she's allowed to speak on that portion of it, so I'd like to make that clear. So for the record, if she has stuff on the residential code, let's, let's finish that up before we move forward. So I apologize if I chased you off, Lisa. I didn't mean to do that. Are you still on?
Yeah, I'm sorry. You didn't chase me out. You guys are working through a busy schedule, so I appreciate that.
So what we'll do just quickly, so we're all on the same page. If you, do you have items to speak on for the residential code?
Mainly I want to speak to the heat pumps and the air quality if possible.
Okay, do you have anything for the mechanical code or the fuel gas code?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right, fair enough. I think we're, I think we're all on the same page now. Okay, we'll move you to the energy code and we'll get to you then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any public testimony on the International Mechanical Code and the International Fuel Gas Code, WAC 5152?
I think we're only going to have one on the. It's going to be Mark John.
Okay. We'll move to WAC 5155, Wireless Interface Code. We have Jesse, Forrest, Kai and Mike. That would be energy. Good? And Allison is still not on Zoom. Mark John? Mark John? Mark? We'll come back to Mark at a later time. Okay, anything, any public testimony for the Wildland Urban Interface Code? WAC 5155? Micah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I signed up to, I sent in the form to speak on this.
Oh, okay. I don't have you on the list. One sec.
That was, he said it had the Mark's name on it. Mike sent in too. They had Mark's name on the second request.
Okay, so I'm, I'm hearing that there was two requests sent in and they had Mark's name on him for, as the person testifying?
My form where I sent in for the UPC also had Wooey Code on it. So I'm not, I'm not sure which one you're talking about for Mark. So I apologize. I didn't, I had to send in separate forms. I just entered on both of them.
Okay, Micah, go ahead. The form is yours.
Thank you. Thank you. So speaking on behalf of the Washington Association of Building Officials and the Washington State Association of Fire Marshals, we came together as a work group that included some folks from King County, and we had some participation from BIAW on developing this entire code. We know there were some testimony questioning whether or not we had the authority to do this. It does appear that we do at this time. We are also working on legislation or with legislators to modify the current RCWs in order to fully adopt this and implement it the way it should be. What we did provide is a public comment, a written public comment that completed the Wooey Code as we wanted to see it. I know we had to rush through a few things at the tag level. However, we did get together and complete Chapter Three, which indicates the mapping, how to read and interpret the mapping and how to apply the mapping when doing findings of fact for the Wildland Urban Interface Code as allowed by the current legislation. We did provide an updated table that kind of walks you through what you need to identify. So you can determine whether or not your area is, or your parcel is within a Wildland Urban Interface area. And with that, we wanted to request that the proposal 21 GP 2059, which was another version of that table, be withdrawn.
Thirty seconds.
Consideration. So we do encourage the full council to adopt the Wildland Urban Interface Code as shown. We will be working on modified legislation. That way it is clear what we intend to adopt, which is just the Wildland Urban Interface Code like the, the other codes are listed in RCW 1927031. And with that, it would provide additional options that could be less restrictive than the current code. Again, this is not new.
That's your time.
Wooey Code went into effect last August.
Is there any further public testimony on the Wildland Urban Interface Code, WAC 5155? Is Dave Gerard on? Or did he leave? No longer on. Okay.
Hi Jenny, it's Ray Tatan.
Yeah, that's for the widget there. Okay, now we'll go to WAC 5111R, Washington State Energy Code Residential Provisions. And first up will be Ty Jennings.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Ty. Your time will start now.
Good morning. My name is Ty Jennings and I'm representing Cascade Natural Gas Corporation. First off, good morning to the members of the State Building Code Council. I thank each of you for your beautiful service today. After listening to testimony in Yakima two weeks ago, I feel I must call attention to the testimony from the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. IBW representatives stated several times that the electrical grid in the Northwest simply cannot handle the increased load associated with the proposals included in this draft energy code. To provide the infrastructure necessary to keep the electrical grid online, additional large-scale transmission line development and substation construction is required to handle the heavy increase in demand. With a shortage of trained and qualified line workers, this infrastructure will take many years, if not decades, to permit and install. We simply cannot put this immediate increase on, in demand on the electrical grid and risk disaster, leaving Washington to follow California in their consistent brownouts. Washington is blessed to have, blessed to have a safe, efficient, and reliable natural gas distribution system already in place, providing energy to 1.2 million residences here in Washington. The use of natural gas in these homes is helping keep our power on by reducing the peak demand on the electrical grid. With requirements for decarbonization of the natural gas sector already mandated through the Clean Buildings Act and Climate Commitment Act, I implore this council to take a deep breath and consider the needs of Washingtonians. Right now, Washingtonians demand of $4,000,000. Given that the increased costs of this energy code are forecasted at over $24,000,000, it is imperative we stop and listen to the needs of Washingtonians. Advanced energy codes will accomplish nothing if Washingtonians cannot afford the price of a new home. I therefore ask this council to please keep today's testimony focused on what Washingtonians need. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Melinda Hughes? Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Ryan Albrecht? Your time starts now.
Thank you. My name is Ryan Albrecht. I work for Murray Franklin, which is a home builder in the greater Seattle area. I want to thank SBCC for just allowing us to have a chance to comment today. My main, my main issue with the energy code that we have right now is that we're going for an energy standard or a strategy to meet a guideline that is probably a little bit out of reach. We're taking too many options away from our homeowners in terms of how they can actually meet the energy code. We've done this by reducing the additional credits, basically taking credits away in a way that so that if you want to put a gas furnace in, you're gonna be penalized initially. And I do believe that we need to retain consumers' opportunities to make choices about their energy use. A couple of specific points. I think we need a balanced approach to how we use energy in this state. We can't just say you're going to use electricity only. I realize that's the mandate, but at the same time, it's not necessarily the only way to achieve a good balance for people of Washington. Specifically, I think U factor on windows. We need to take a look at what we've done where we keep bringing that down. We've had serious supply issues around, around windows in the last few years here, and that was made worse by the pandemic. As you continue to increase the U factor or decrease the U factor to make it more necessary for us to put in a better window, that actually becomes a real logistical problem. Also, I think we need to look at the air changes per hour. Three, three hour changes per hour is actually a very difficult standard, and it is a no-cost issue for builders. So reverting back to 500 changes per hour as a standard, keeping three-hour changes per hour for an upgrade makes more sense. And I also believe that you need to look at option two, where you have a, currently you do not have any option for a deeply buried duct in a, in an attic situation for a return error as you do in option one. Option two is an heat pump option. Thank you.
Melinda Hughes?
Morning.
Good morning. Your time starts now.
All right. So my name is Melinda Hughes and I live and work in Olympia. In addition to being a concerned citizen, I hold a master's in environmental law and policy focusing on energy law and climate change law. I've worked in the environmental field now for almost 30 years on climate change issues since 2005, with an extensive background in natural resource extraction as well as pipeline safety. I'm also the executive director for Thurston Climate Action Team, better known as TCAT. Our work focuses on reducing greenhouse gases in partnership with the four principal jurisdictions who are urging adoption of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. But their authority only goes so far. So we urge the council to help our elected leaders as well as our residents by adopting the proposed changes. Behind me, you can see a lot of people in blue. So a lot of residents are coming out and speaking up for the actual, to adopt the proposed changes. Methane is dangerous. Besides its combustibility factor, methane becomes trapped in mountainous areas, creating an exasperating health issues, especially for those with respiratory conditions and other marginalized populations. Other methane escapes travels far, contributes to air pollution downwinds, also crosses a country. So what we do in Washington State affects us beyond our borders. With the methane, we also curb other hazardous air pollutants such as VOCs, which are released alongside the methane. In my free time, I work with scientists and physicists on a global team that's turning waste into sustainable products, green hydrogen, biochar, as well as we just unveiled a net negative concrete. The group, the buildings industry is definitely seeing progress in technology. So technology's moving forward in the building sector, including heat pumps and induction stoves, a coach to keep up with the progress for a clean energy future. Finally, from a moral standpoint, it's our duty to combat climate change now. My fiance is a 35-year-old veteran of the union in the building sector. I see supply issues all the time. It's not supply issues that are driving up the price. It's actually the wages that are driving up the price. The heat pump should not be, you know, discounted because of the cost of the difference. So thank you again for considering climate change and equity in your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Robert on this list?
Oh, and she should be, yes, but she's way apart. She was moved from a different list.
Okay. Okay, Jesse Simmons?
Can I refer you to my previous testimony?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The bag? See on there? Brett? Okay. Janie Hitchen? Welcome. Your time starts now.
Thank you. My name is Janie Hitchen and I'm a member of the Pierce County Council. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I'm also a former high school teacher and taught science for many years and had many different conversations with my students who were concerned about their ability to live to my age. We must, as policymakers and as this committee, think beyond today's generation. On behalf of children in our state today and the children coming in the future, we must use all the possible tools to reduce our carbon footprint. Many home builders are already having great success building with heat pumps for space and water heating. Highly efficient, all-electric buildings typically cost less to build and less to operate once they're built, while also helping to avert public health and climate costs. But because some developers will continue with current practices until prodded to change by the SBCC, we must enact building requirements that decarbonize our energy and heat sources and eventually provide a way to retrofit older buildings. The Residential Energy Code proposal focuses on prioritizing energy-efficient electric heat pumps that help both the heating and cooling, which we need now more than ever due to climate change. It prioritizes using clean electricity as an energy source and looks to require stricter ventilation requirements when gas stoves are used. There are other things mentioned, but these are the ideas that students have shared with me prior to becoming an elected official. I know as we continue to build for a growing population in Washington, these changes will have a net impact of good and begin to show our use that we want them to have a healthy place to live now and in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sarah Moore?
Thank you.
Sarah, we can hear you and your two minutes starts now.
Good morning, members of the State Building Code Council. Thank you for providing this opportunity for testimony. My name is Sarah Moore. I'm a resident, a parent, and a city council member in Burien, Washington and King County. I want to urge you to adopt the proposed energy code updates, especially the requirement for heat pumps and for increased ventilation for gas stoves, because moving away from methane gas in our buildings is important for addressing the climate crisis as well as a safeguard on the health and safety of the community. When I moved to my current home, we purchased a new fancy expensive natural gas burning stove. Despite complying with all codes, we, there were defects with the starter in the oven portion of the unit, which caused a delay between the gas turning on and the flame igniting. The gas would turn on when the door was open, which would blow the stove door entirely open and send out a small fireball. It was not until we replaced the stove with an electric that I became aware that the headaches I experienced when preparing dinner were connected with poorly ventilated and in effectively working gas stoves. On the other hand, my household is the only one among several of our neighbors to have a heat pump that provides both heat in the winter and cooling in the summer. And we have become a haven in recent years for neighbors who need to cool down, including geriatric neighbors and friends with pets that have health problems, who bring their animals to our house to take advantage of the heat pumps that is able to cool them. Thank you for considering both of these options, and I will finish up my testimony.
Thank you. Albert Sardinas? Albert Sardinas? Paula Sardinas?
I'm here. Thank you very much. Good morning, members.
Your time starts now. Go ahead.
Good morning, members of the State Building Code Council. My name is Paula Sardinas and I'm proud to represent the Washington Build Back Black Alliance. We are a coalition of 16 BIPOC CBOs serving Washington State and nearly 330,000 Washingtonians. Testifying this morning is support of the energy code and heat pump proposals. We know the impacts of environmental racism are not going equally. Marginalized communities have lived and experienced documented inequities because of structural and systematic racism that dates back to redlining. The harm caused by where we work, live, and play is without any controversy. Every three years, this body has an opportunity to look at these policies and the past ordinances that align with Washington's values. We can look at our neighbors and their children and say, we see your humanity. Washington State has said unequivocally over the past two to five years, we can't wait. We must reach net by 2050. We know that disproportionately impacted families live in modest and low-income housing. Their access to methane gas is a direct result of their dependence on their heat pumps, their water pumps, and their air conditioning. We have an opportunity to data send a strong message that we don't expect Washingtonians to choose between bare necessities and basic human health. We can offer a better choice. So I urge you to adopt the proposed energy code updates because moving away from methane gas where we work, live, and play is addressing the climate crisis, healthcare disparities, and our needs. I am a 50-year-old black woman with asthma. The change in these policies will not save my life, but they'll save the life of community members that look like me. I'm in Issupah, Washington, and I thank you so much for hearing my testimony.
Thank you. Gordon Wade?
Good morning.
Morning. Your time starts now.
Dear members of the Building Code Council, thank you very much for hearing my testimony. My name is Gordon Wade. I'm a physician and a public health advocate. As you know, modern building codes require houses to be quite airtight to conserve energy. However, tight buildings do not allow for indoor air pollution to escape without the resident actively turning on an outside vent. And we know that's something that very few residents do. Tight buildings create a safety risk from high concentrations of indoor air pollution. And this is why the disincentive to install new gas stoves provided by the proposed codes is an important safety measure. Installing fewer gas cooking stoves would immediately decrease asthma in children and cardiovascular disease and cancer risk in adults in all of those houses. Eliminating air indoor combustion resolves the indoor air pollution, public health issue. Eliminating air indoor combustion resolves the indoor air pollution, public health issue. Thank you very much.
Austin White? Austin? Austin White? Here in Lavelle? Here in Lavelle? Charlotte Ursus?
She had to leave, and she'll return later.
Thank you. We'll get back to her. Catherine Chuddy?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Try that one more time. It was a little choppy.
Okay, I'm gonna leave my video off because my connection may be shaky. Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you just fine. Your time starts now.
Great, thank you. Members of the State Building Code Council, thank you for providing this opportunity for testimony. My name is Catherine Chuddy, and I'm a longtime resident and retired healthcare worker in Vancouver, Washington. I have endured two successive summers of record heat temperature days without air conditioning while my gas furnace sits idle through the summer months. No help with the cooling I now need in the changing climate conditions we face. My gas company gives me a deceptive deliberately misleading marketing message delivered with my gas bill telling me that renewable natural gas is on its way home. Our net zero carbon energy future is just around the corner. They don't tell me that because of cost, supply, and availability challenges, they are not in fact going to deliver a renewable, safe, healthy product to my home anytime soon, if ever. This is the essence of corporate greenwashing to benefit their shareholders and business bottom line, not provide me with the most efficient and healthy way to heat and cool my home. We have to start somewhere, not digging deeper with burning fossil fuels, but instead build our new homes without climate and health harming emissions. I, for one, am tired of being gaslit by the gas industry. I urge you to see through the intentionally misleading claims of the gas utilities that ignore the growing body of evidence about the harms of continuing to burn gas fuel in our homes. I urge you to adopt the proposed energy code updates because moving away from methane gas to using clean and efficient electricity in our homes is a necessary step to address our climate crisis while at the same time protect our community public health. Thank you.
Thank you. Boris Wilson?
He's already gone. We'll refer back to him.
That's the morning. Thank you. Elsie Sabal? Go ahead, take a seat. Your time starts now. Go ahead.
Members of the State Building Code Council, thank you for taking all of our testimonies into consideration. My name is Elsie, and I'm a high schooler here in Olympia. I urge you to adopt the proposed energy code updates because we don't have time not to. I've grown up with climate change. I can't remember a time when I didn't think about it and feel scared. As I've grown, my dread has only worsened as I realized how little we're actually doing about it and how small our attempts are in the face of everything. In the newest IPCC report, it said that our emissions have to peak by twenty twenty-five, which is in three years, at the very latest, to stay below the magic one point five degrees Celsius. It's true that you could wait another three years to pass this proposal. And in those three years, nothing much will change. Your life will go on just like it's always been. I know that to you, it doesn't seem like things can change very much in that little time, but it can. In three years, I'll be twenty. My life will have changed completely. I'll be attending my second year of college in a new city with a new home and living with new people. And if we do nothing in three years, it'll already be too late. We'll be facing a climate catastrophe, and the people my age will have to deal with the repercussions of your actions. We have to do everything that we can while we can do it. And if that means, and if that means that houses are cheaper and we have better indoor air quality, then it's the perfect solution. So please, for me and for every young person in the state, adopt the proposed energy codes. My future, my right to clean air and clean water and stable food systems depends on you. Thank you.
Madeline Bishop? Madeline Bishop? Lisa Ornstein? Lisa, your time starts now.
Thank you. Members of the State Building Code Council, I thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony. My name is Lisa Ornstein. I live in Olympia and am the mother of two children in their mid twenties who miss their father every day. I'm here to urge you to adopt the proposed energy code updates because moving away from methane gas in our buildings is critical to addressing climate crisis. This is not about some of the future potentiality. Climate change is here now, and its effects in the Pacific Northwest are already deadly. My ex-husband perished in the twenty twenty-one Portland, Oregon heat dome because his apartment building had no air conditioning. He left behind a grieving family. Highly efficient heat pumps with cooling capabilities will keep vulnerable people safe during increasingly extreme and deadly heat waves or wildfires, especially for homeowners and apartment dwellers who otherwise cannot afford air conditioning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, first? Kaylee Galloway?
Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, we can hear you. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for providing this opportunity for testimony. My name is Kaylee Galloway, and I am a Wacom County Council member. In June, the Wacom County Council voted six to one to send you all a letter outlining our perspective on this important issue. We support a new residential energy code that will help our communities decarbonize by transitioning to electric space and water heating while also addressing the vulnerabilities to climate change, reducing indoor and outdoor air pollution, and ensuring that our communities are sustainable, affordable, equitable, and healthy now and in the future. By electrifying and increasing energy efficiency, we can work to reduce pollution and carbon emissions from our building sector. In twenty twenty-one, Wacom County adopted a climate action plan, which includes strategies and actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the built environment. We recognize buildings comprise the second largest and fastest growing component of our state's greenhouse gas emissions, including twenty-nine percent in our county emissions. Here in Wacom County, we have seen climate change right before our eyes. Over the past couple of years, we have experienced increasingly severe and frequent effects of climate change, including unprecedented heat waves, drought, smoke from wildfires, flooding, and other severe weather events. And we know we're not alone. These emergencies often disproportionately impact our low-income and rural communities, exacerbating inequities and vulnerabilities. Communities must be able to prepare for emergencies and continue to build resilience and self-sufficiency. Therefore, we urge the council to support a strategic transition to all-electric new residential construction and incorporate measures addressing vulnerabilities and increasing community resilience. As Wacom County is still recovering from climate-related emergencies and preparing for future ones, we recognize climate change is a threat and must be addressed at every level, and we are committed to doing our part. I urge the SBCC to move forward with a new residential energy code that addresses these important issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Daniel Kaden?
Daniel Kaden? Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Good morning, council members. My name is Daniel Cadden. I'm a resident of Olympia. I'm here to urge adoption of the proposed residential building code updates. I've been deeply involved in affordable housing issues for many years and previously served as executive director of a local faith-based nonprofit working on housing solutions for the hardest-to-house population. The immediate local challenges of homelessness and housing needs are often overwhelming. But more and more, we have all come to better understand the practical and long-term connections between affordable housing and clean energy efficiency. There is no way forward without consciously linking climate and housing goals. New all-electric constructions, specifically heat pumps, and extending code provisions to low-rise multifamily buildings, which are increasingly common type of affordable housing in our communities, will have tangible financial health and safety benefits for those who live on the economic margins and bear a disproportionate burden of energy costs and exposure to unsafe environmental conditions. These goals resonate deeply with me and among affordable housing experts and advocates across the state. The decisions you make will shape outcomes for many, many Washingtonians who have challenges accessing safe, healthy, energy-efficient, and affordable housing, including individuals on the precipice of homelessness, vulnerable seniors, and struggling families with children. I appreciate the opportunity today, and I especially thank you for your work on these complex issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel, and I apologize for the mispronunciation. Just a reminder to those that are just joining us, the public testimony time is two minutes, and I will say when there is thirty seconds left. So if you hear me say thirty seconds, I'm not trying to cut you off, just giving you a heads up. Ron Perkewitz? Ron Perkewitz? Jessica Zimmerley? Jessica?
Hi.
We can hear you, and your time starts now. Thank you.
Great, thank you. My name is Sister Jessica Zimmerley. I am a deaconess in the Lutheran tradition, and I serve as the advocacy director of Earth Ministry and Washington Interfaith Power and Light. We are a statewide nonprofit, and we work with over three hundred spiritual communities and represent nearly six thousand individuals who are people from all different faith traditions that come together around our deep care for environmental justice. And with reflecting and preparing for today, this conversation, you know, the smoke has been weighing on us all so much in these last few weeks. And our executive director this week shared how their child couldn't go to school because the air quality was so poor. And I grew up in the Central Valley of Northern California, and I literally didn't know that it wasn't normal to have spare the air days, which were days when the air quality was so bad. We didn't have recess. We had to stay inside. I grew up thinking that was normal until I came to the Pacific Northwest. And we think asking our children, and those who are the most vulnerable to stay inside, will protect them in these times of poor air quality and smoke covering creation. And the sad reality is that that is not the case with indoor air estimated by the EPA to be two to five times more polluted than outdoor air. So with that, we really fully recommend passing the proposed code updates and especially support the requirements for heat pump systems in new homes and stricter ventilation for gas stoves. We want to see more clean air in our homes so we can all grow up healthy and take action on the climate crisis, which we see as a moral crisis. So we'll also be submitting a letter signed by members of the faith community, and that will be coming in later this afternoon. And we thank you for this time to testify and for your leadership on behalf of our shared climate and communities. Thanks.
Thank you. Janet Hitchbough?
Good morning, council.
Good morning. Your time starts now.
Thank you. My name is Janet Hitchbough, and I'm a resident of Vancouver, Washington. And I urge you to adopt the proposed energy code updates. Year after year, we receive increasingly urgent reports from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, urging drastic cuts in carbon emissions. Year after year, more of the West burns as our air is filled with smoke. And year after year, we spend precious time and energy debating whether various proposals to address the crisis we face are too soon or too radical. I say no. The proposed code is neither too soon nor too radical. It will benefit both the earth and the residents who will live in those buildings, both with their health and with affordability. The Roman Empire Emperor Nero was known for fiddling while his country burned. I suggest that we not become known in the same way. It's time to stop fiddling and to act. Please adopt the proposed codes. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Butcher? Monica Zazuetta? Oh, did I miss that? Oh, I'm sorry. Correct. Sorry, we're gonna go to Lisa Parsley?
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Your time starts now.
Okay, I am an Olympia City Council member, but I haven't had a chance to say yet. I also serve as the Chair of the Thurston County Climate Mitigation Planning Steering Committee. I first want to refer you to a letter from the Olympia City Council signed by our mayor, Cheryl Selby, but I want to point out that all seven council members supported this letter. And I want to state very clearly for the record, as an Olympia City Council member and as an individual, I urge you to adopt the proposed energy code updates, especially the requirements for heat pumps and increased ventilation for gas stoves. Honestly, I'm not sure what I can add much more than Elise did. I can say I challenge you to look into the eyes of a person below the age of eighteen and know that your decision will impact their future. You need to ask yourself, what will their world look like when they are your age? As a city council member, I have had to look into our youth size, and it has lit the fire in me, knowing we do not have enough time to do the work for climate mitigation. I want to point out just a few things. In Thurston County, two-thirds of the, our carbon footprint is our built environment. Continuing to add new buildings to the gas distribution will lock into for decades carbon and methane emissions that will be costly for us to retrofit in the future and put us backwards. I also want to point out that in twenty twenty-one, the Harvard School of Public Health said that in the United States, we spend sixty-five billion dollars due to indoor poor air quality from natural gas burning. And in Washington state, we spend about six point three billion. And then one more time, for Ms. Sardinas, this is not just about climate change. It's about a sense of equity. We are going to have to address climate change if we are going to provide a diverse and equitable society because climate change is impacting these communities most. Thank you.
Monica Zazuetta?
Hello. Can you all hear me?
I can. Your time starts now. Thank you, Monica.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm just getting to my notes. I'm so sorry. So good afternoon, State Building Code Council. Hope you all are doing well. I'm here to speak today to urge you all to adopt the proposed energy code updates because moving away from methane gas in our buildings is important for addressing the climate crisis, health, equity, and for the future of my two kiddos, Aries, who is eight, and Rufio, who is one month old, and for all future generations. Sir David King, the UK's former chief scientist, told the opening session of the National Climate Emergency Summit in Melbourne last year, what we do over the next three to four years, I believe, is going to determine the future of humanity. We are in a very, very desperate situation. I am terrified. I'm terrified because I know that we don't do this together. And I just need, I need my kiddos to, I can't leave my kiddos on a dying planet. And I really, I urge and I beg you all to please do this for the future, for now, for everything, because we need you. And I need you, and my kids need you. So I just thank you all for everything that you do. But please, please push this forward, and I'll be one happy mama. So I just thank you all. So you take care. You take care.
Thank you. Rachel Weasley?
Good morning.
Good morning. Your time starts now.
Hello, members of the SBCC. I'm Rachel Weasley. I'm a local pastor and renter in Dellingham, Washington. Today, I'm urging you to adopt the proposed energy code update. Today, I'm urging you to adopt the proposed energy code updates for heat pumps and improve ventilation for gas stoves. As we see more extreme weather, a well-insulated home with a heat pump will be much safer and do a better job at maintaining air temperatures and indoor air quality for people during heat waves and wildfire smoke. Um, I'm concerned about building new gas infrastructure amid a rapidly changing climate, building with gas-powered furnaces and water heaters, which last one to two decades, locks in carbon emissions, just as we are hoping to reduce them. High emissions causing climate change have contributed to the population influx to our region. As temperatures and water access elsewhere become untenable, the housing affordability crisis is already here. Building with fossil fuel furnaces all these years has prevented, if anything, it's contributed to it. I have a four-year-old child, so the proposed building codes hit home for me in two important ways. One is safety. We have a local teenager lost his life because he was fishing and a gas explosion killed him. Meanwhile, as smoky conditions become common, clean indoor air is vital for our young children towards their lungs and respiratory systems. And two, I partly desire a safe, natural environment for my children who are old and just in the past seven years, the weather has changed drastically, and we can reverse this trend by cutting emissions now and adopting heat pumps. Please do what you can for my child and his generation to reduce our state's carbon emissions and safeguard the environment for our children to grow up in. I'm really excited about this heat pump option. Hope that it gets adopted. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Patience Malabas? Representative Doerr? Are you on Zoom? Representative Doerr? Okay, you should be able to unmute.
Here I am. My apologies.
No, that's okay. No, go ahead. Your time starts now.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and for your service on the council. For the record, I'm Representative Davina Doerr, representing the First District. I'm also an architect by training and have a deep commitment to ensuring our built environment is sustainable and moving toward the state legislative mandate that residential construction permitted under the 2031 State Energy Code achieve a seventy percent reduction in annual net energy consumption. The legislature has worked hard to pass laws that ensure that we are headed toward a sustainable future that mitigates the most dire effects of climate change and adopts to those already underway. The legislature has a set of series, has a set of series of aggressive targets to reduce carbon emissions, green the grid, transition to electric vehicles, construct energy-efficient buildings, and reduce super pollutants. The 2021 Washington State Energy Strategy states that building electrification is the least cost strategy to decarbonize the building sector. However, a cost-effective electrification strategy requires a concerted effort, not a piecemeal series of changes. To send a strong market signal to manufacturers and distributors, the state must implement a consistent electrification strategy, starting with residential buildings that have yet to be built. Specifically, I support a residential energy code that requires electric heat pump technology for water and space heating, as the fossil fuel counterparts of these appliances account for the majority of emissions in the building sector. As a legislator, I'm committed to solve climate change by lowering Washington's greenhouse gas emissions, helping my constituents and our state be healthier and more resilient. The legislative directive is clear, and the SBCC can assist in meeting our clear legislative intent by establishing a pathway toward clean electrification of our homes. For all the reasons mentioned above, I urge the SBCC to pass the proposed changes to the residential code, including requiring heat pump space and water heating in new commercial buildings and, or residential buildings, ensuring that Washington is sustainable, equitable, and healthy now and in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Patience Malabas? Uh, just a reminder for those that have just showed up, we will be taking we'll be taking a ten-minute break at twelve o'clock. Uh, that will push the public testimony to two ten. Uh, you'll have two minutes on your comments, and I will let you know when there's thirty seconds left. We'll come back to patience right after the break. Eric Pravits?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Your time starts now. Thank you.
Great. Okay, uh, members of the committee, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity, uh, you know, to comment on the proposed energy code changes. My name is Eric Pravits. I'm the Director of Real Estate Development for Homestead Community Land Trust. And we feel strongly that decarbonizing our new construction homes is critical to creating a healthy indoor environment. Better energy efficiency brings down the total cost of homeownership, which helps our low-income homebuyers, same people who are often the ones most impacted by the negative impacts of climate change. So we need to clean up our new construction housing and at the same time reduce our impact on the environment. Really, the time to act is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey Eckert?
Members of the State Building Council, thank you for offering my testimony. My name is Corey Eckert. I'm the owner of Alpine Duckless here in Olympia. We specialize in install, installation and sales of duckless heat pumps. Since 2012, my company has installed over four thousand duckless heat pumps in both new construction and existing homes. Over eighty of those installs have been for habitat, habitat for humanity homes in Thurston, Pierce, and Kitsap Counties. Two considerations when analyzing affordable housing are the cost to build the home and then the cost to live in the home once it's built. Of the systems we've installed for Habitat, we never used the cheapest model, but we chose models with high efficiency. Increased cost was minimal, that while maximizing the reduction of electric electricity needed to heat and cool the homes. In 2016, a study by Tacoma Power concluded that, or conducted on fifteen of the homes that we had had installed them on proved that the installation of the duckless heat pumps, the increase in cost to the home was fully recovered by the homeowner in less than five years through savings on their utility bills. Probably maintained duckless heat pumps lasts fifteen to twenty years or more. So the homeowners concludes, excuse me. So the homeowner continues to save on the power bill for the life of the heat pump. Maintaining the duckless heat pump is easy for homeowners and is done professionally, can be done for as little as a hundred and fifty dollars a year. All the duckless heat pumps provide both heating and air conditioning. We learned from the heat wave of June two, two thousand twenty-one, that air conditioning is not just a luxury, but arguably a lifesaver, especially for low-income and elderly. Duckless heat pumps are the right choice for homeowners, the environment, and affordable housing. I urge you to adopt the proposals in the
Thank you. Annie Phillips?
Hi, I'm Annie Phillips. I live in Burien. I'm
Your time starts now. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Annie Phillips. I live in Burien. I'm a full-time volunteer climate activist and I co-chair two local groups of citizen climate activists. And we applaud your proposal for the update for the residential building code. I used to live in Los Angeles, and in the seventies, I was a single mom and I had two little kids. And one morning about five o'clock, we were sharply awakened by an earthquake. The kids were terrified. I was pretty scared. Uh, they ran into me and we all hid under the covers. And my daughter asked, mommy, what is this? And I said, it's an earthquake, honey. And she said, is it an earthquake nature? And I said, yes, it's nature. She said, oh, good, then it can't hurt us. Oh. Global warming is not nature. We've done this to ourselves in the last two hundred years, and we can undo it if we act fast and with decisiveness. And that's why we applaud your heat pump proposals and your proposal for better ventilation for gas stoves, because this will go so far to make our new homes in Washington State healthy and green for our grandchildren, my seven grandchildren. Thank you.
Pam Clough? Sorry, I forgot.
I'm super impressed, actually.
Got a little bit late today. Okay, your time starts now. Thank you.
Uh, members of the State Building Code Council, thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Pam Clough, and I'm an advocate with Environment Washington. We're a statewide citizen-based environmental advocacy organization, and we work for clean air, clean water, and open spaces. I'm testifying to urge you to approve the proposed updates to the Washington State Residential Energy Code, requiring that new homes be built with high energy and high-efficiency energy heat pumps to heat and cool our spaces with water and increased ventilation for kitchens that burn polluting gas. Uh, in 2019, Washington established a statewide goal to transition our grid to a hundred percent clean energy by 2045. And so while we do this, we also have the opportunity to decarbonize all aspects of our lives for our health and to reduce emissions, um, including the use of highly efficient heat pumps. Um, currently, emissions from the building sector are the fastest-growing source of climate pollution in Washington State. In addition to climate pollution, buildings are a significant source of unhealthy air pollution. Uh, reports have shown that homes with gas stoves have significantly higher nitrogen dioxide levels than homes using electric or induction stoves, and this can obviously contribute to health problems, um, heart failure and asthma, just some of those. Just one hour of cooking on gas stoves can produce nitrogen dioxide levels that would be illegal if found outdoors. So while we need to eventually transition to cleaner, safer electric and induction cooking, requiring better ventilation in kitchens with gas stoves is a necessary step forward in protecting Washingtonians. Uh, these proposed code updates ensure that as Washington grows and as we construct new homes, we're creating healthy homes and honoring the climate commitments on Washington, Maine. Uh, thank you so much for your consideration and work on behalf of the state.
Thank you. Peter Guduski? Peter Guduski? Brian Ricker? Your two minutes starts now.
Uh, good morning, council members. Thanks for the opportunity to join me today. My name is Brian Ricker. I'm with Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories. And as a reminder, SEL is proudly founded and headquartered in Pullman, Washington, and we have twenty-eight hundred employees throughout the state. Uh, SEL specializes in creating digital products and systems that protect and control and automate the power systems around the world. We work to make electric power safer, more reliable, and more economical. We all want cleaner air, safe drinking water, and a sustainable future. But taking steps to remove natural gas from Washington's energy mix will only harm those who can support it. Let's learn from California's challenges instead of blindly following their lead. They have seven-dollar gas, electricity rates that are the highest in the country and only continue to increase. People are struggling and they're mad. SEL is a company of inventors and innovators, and so we can tell you with confidence that the best way to support innovation towards cleaner electric power and cleaner buildings is not to mandate a single solution, but to keep the door open with regulatory framework that supports new ideas. We understand that if supply does not meet demand on the power grid, lights will go out. These proposed energy code changes will push more demand onto the grid, and we need to ensure the grid is ready so that our citizens and businesses are not unnecessarily harmed in the process of pursuing electrification. As an employer trying to attract the best and the brightest to live and work in Washington, we also want to ensure that our employees can afford housing in our communities.
Thirty seconds.
Every one thousand dollars added to the price of a new home prices out two thousand one hundred and eighty-two households. Costs for these code proposals could rob nearly fifty-three families, fifty-three thousand families of the opportunity to purchase a home. We should not be forcing our citizens to pay more money to have fewer choices. Washington can meet the stated goal of seventy percent reduction in energy consumption by 2030 without eliminating customer choice for their space and heating. Although electric pump heats, they can play a part. Thank you.
Caitlin Grant? Caitlin Grant? Time starts now.
Good morning, members of the State Building Code Council. My name is Caitlin Grant, and I'm commenting today on behalf of the Washington Environmental Council in support of the energy code changes under consideration. I also live here in Olympia and own a craftsman home built in nineteen twenty-seven. Uh, nearly a hundred years old, our home has a lot of character and also some twentieth-century elements that must be updated for the twenty-first century. Two of those elements are a gas furnace and a gas stove with no vent hood. My partner and I bought our home, we knew we'd have to shoulder the substantial costs, which will be thousands of dollars, of installing a vent hood and upgrading our electrical service panel for a heat pump at some point. That was just part of buying a home. But there's no reason that homes being built today should lock future residents into costly and complex retrofits for years of breathing toxic fumes from natural gas furnaces and water heaters and unventilated natural gas stoves and ovens. The way forward is clear. We need to be building twenty-first century homes with the benefit of twenty-first century knowledge and technology. The code proposals under consideration will deliver just that, high-efficiency electric appliances and proper ventilation. Uh, four thousand five hundred and eighty-seven community members have commented to the council during this open comment period in support of these code updates. In addition, there have been letters of support from eighteen building industry organizations, seven affordable housing organizations, sixteen racial justice organizations, thirteen environmental organizations, two healthcare organizations, including the Washington Medical, State Medical Association, sixty-seven local elected officials and over a hundred faith leaders. Thank you for your consideration of all of our comments. Please vote to approve the full package of proposals.
Phyllis Farrell? Time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Phyllis Farrell. I'm a resident of Thurston County, and thank you for the opportunity to urge for the adoption of the Residential Energy Code updates. From the proposed codes to transition to all-electric system in the new buildings will be an important component of Washington's goals to reduce emissions uh, from methane gas in homes and buildings to address climate change and for electricity to be fossil-free by 2045. Washington State Energy Code Strategies Model Scenario for Full Electrification predicts the proposed codes will have long-term benefits, including affordable rates. Transitioning buildings to all-electric is achievable, affordable, safe, and creates a more resilient energy system. I can attest to this because two years ago I had an energy audit by PSE and subsequently installed a new energy-efficient furnace and heat pump. My energy audit confirmed I had good windows and insulation, but nevertheless, my energy usage dropped forty percent the next year, which was the pandemic year when I was home all day long, saving me sixty dollars a month in my electric bill. Please approve the proposed residential energy code updates to transition to all-electric systems to include heat pumps in new buildings. My heat pump was a lifesaver during a heat dome. So thank you for your work and your service and your consideration.
Thank you. Randall King? Randall King? Akil Wareda? Akil Wareda?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Your time starts now.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I, my connection is very slow, so I'm going to mute my video. Uh, I am Akil Wareda. I'm an electrical engineer by, uh, by discipline, and I work for King County wastewater By discipline and I work for King County Waste Water Treatment Division. And I, I am kind of familiar with H V C systems and how the gas burning. Effect is we burn a lot of gas on our flares at King County, and I know how the issue is. And with all that knowledge and experience, I have also working experience in heat pumps and furnaces. Because I work a lot with H V C engineers and heating and cooling of the buildings. So with all this, what I would say is. We have a moral obligation to. Cut the carbon emission. Look what we have now. We have six or five days of abnormal. Air quality and it has to be canceled. My daughter's soccer have to be canceled twice. We inherited this problem from our. From our parents or from. From, from what we have inherited from last years. We don't want to pass it to the, our, our kids and the next generation. We have all the things we have to make this amen to this. I really. Recommend that having this energy efficient heat pumps. To be included, to be included in the energy code. It's very important and we need to do that to save our environment. It's a big issue now with what we are having with this. And like this atmospheric. Greenhouse effect we have now in America. Thank you.
That's your time. Thank you. Said Ay. Said Ay. They were logged on earlier, but they're no longer there. Tom Crawford.
Good morning.
Good morning. Your time starts now.
Thank you. My name is Tom Crawford. I am board president for Thurston Climate Action Team. We have worked with the four largest jurisdictions in, in our county, in Thurston County, on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And as Melinda and Lisa referred, you know, mentioned earlier. By expanding the use of energy efficient heat pumps and reducing gas, fossil gas use in homes. We believe the proposed changes to the state energy code will provide important help to our efforts. They will also save residents money on utility bills, improve health, and support home safety with air conditioning on hot days. I have worked with indigenous communities throughout the Pacific Northwest on education and community development projects. Indigenous communities are suffering severe impact from climate change while they try to protect their land, waters, and fisheries. As I work on climate change here in Thurston County. I try to listen for the teachings of the people whose home this has been for thousands of years and whose guest I am on this land. I invite council members to pay special attention to tribal voices in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to 12 o'clock. We will take a 10-minute recess in the public hearing and. Pick it back up at 12:10. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we call this public hearing back to order. Order, please. Point of order.
If you're going to speak, please take it outside.
Point of order. The public hearing is resumed. Thank you. Okay, Cody Sims. Cody Sims. Yeah. Narmana Shirazi.
Good morning. Good afternoon, rather. My name is Narmana Shirazi. I live in Spokane and work for the Lance. Okay, I live and work in Spokane for the Lance Council and also for the Spokane Low Income Housing Consortium. I'm an immigrant and have lived in Spokane since the last 10 years. I'm also a renter in one of the lowest median income districts in Spokane. So I'm representing a huge swath of communities of color and stand in solidarity with my brothers and sisters of the indigenous community here. I'm grateful that I get to live in a state that is, that is a leader in green initiatives and committed to reducing the carbon footprint statewide. And want to reiterate Paula Sardini's testimony from this morning. She outlined many of the points around access and equity that I wanted to make. For those reasons outlined above, I would like to urge the council to adopt the proposals under W S E C residential provisions. In Washington, most of the gas we use in our homes is expensive and brought to us by fracking. Gas extractions from fracking largely take place on or near tribal or First Nation lands. Creating disproportionate risk to indigenous communities for air pollution, water contamination, and overuse of water. This is particularly true for Spokane region where our four tribes heritage lifestyle is at risk. Due to many factors affecting the Spokane River and our sole source aquifer, which includes fracking. My son was a boy scout and working on his sustainability merit badge. When he came to me asking if I knew what fracking was, I did not. So we went back and researched it, and I was truly appalled. To discover how terrible it is for the environment. People spend the majority of their homes indoors up to 90% of their lives. And yet indoor air quality is estimated by the EPA to be two to five times more polluted than outdoor grass because of methane. I thank the council for their work and again urge you to adopt the package as we can continue to live in a healthy and green environment. Thank you for the opportunity to hear me, hear my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Scott Murray. Time starts now.
Hi, my name is Andrea Scott Murray. I've lived in Washington State my whole life. I'm 67. I have asthma, as many of my family members also have respiratory issues. I also have been diagnosed with COPD. My doctors tell me that I have 75% lung capacity of a person my age and gender. That affects many parts of my life. And it's my understanding that. The paramount purpose of building codes are to ensure the safety and health of the people who use those codes. I've heard many, I just want to take one second to appreciate that we're all in a room together and able to. Listen to each other's testimony of varying. Strikes on this issue. And I've listened carefully to issues about cost from the building issue, from the building industry. And I've listened to issues of health and safety. From my personal perspective, health and safety has to come first. Not only personal safety and health, but the health and safety of our species on this planet. I just want to add as individual. History. My mom was a single mom in, living in Renton in 19, the early 1980s. She thought as a heat pump, replace the gas furnace with a heat pump. She never. Regretted that decision. It was a very good financial decision for her. I think she had repairs on that. Once. Thank you.
Wendy Krakauer.
Members of the State Building Code Council.
Starts now.
Members of the State Building Code Council, thank you for providing this opportunity for testimony. My name is Wendy Krakauer and I live in Seattle. I'm a grandmother who wants Washington to remain livable for my grandchildren. Two years ago, I replaced my 40-year-old natural gas furnace with a new gas furnace. No one told me that natural gas is not really natural. The company selling me the furnace certainly did not tell me how harmful natural gas is to our environment. Nor did they mention that I could have easily installed an electric heat pump instead. It is not feasible for me to now replace that almost new furnace with an electric heat pump. And I realize we cannot mandate replacement of all existing gas furnaces. But our state's legislative commitment to a 95% reduction in emissions by 2050. Will not be achievable if we continue to expand fossil fuel infrastructure. Homes and buildings are one of the largest and fastest growing sources of climate pollution in Washington. And to that end, the State Building Code Council can ensure that as we are building new homes. We are doing so sustainably and while protecting the health and safety of not only my grandchildren, but of all residents of Washington. Accordingly, I urge you to adopt the proposed residential energy code updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Vasquez. Robin, your time starts now. Thank you.
Hello, esteemed members of the council. Robin Vasquez, I use she/her pronouns, and I am a member of the Lacey City Council here in Thurston County. Earlier this year, Lacey City Council had a lot of conversations about our urban tree policy. We were discussing what trees do for the community. Because trees, like energy efficient heat phones, sequester pollen, they decrease emissions. You know, especially mature trees. During our discussions, one of our city staff shared that. Due to hotter, drier summers, many of our trees, which are native, local breeds of trees. Were ailing. They were in failing health. This terrified me. Because of climate change, one of the most beautiful and iconic characteristics of the Pacific Northwest are trees. They're struggling to survive. Lacey eventually decided to increase protections on trees in our community. And I urge this council to do similarly and adopt these proposed building codes. Doing this is good for the environment. It's good for people, and it's good for the sustainability of our towns and cities. I have two little kids. I have a daughter who's eight and a son who's five. And I want Lacey and Washington to be as beautiful and healthy and green for them when they grow up as it has been for me my whole life. So. I'm here today for my city, but first I'm here for my kids. I urge you to adopt these measures to protect their future.
Thank you. Donna Albert. Donna Albert. Time starts now.
Thanks. Members of State Building Code Council, thanks for this opportunity to speak. I'm Donna Albert, newly retired, Masters in Civil Engineering, B D A P, and grandmother from Montesano. Please adopt the proposed energy code updates because all electric homes are safer for the climate and healthier for occupants. Children in a home with a gas stove are more likely to have symptoms of asthma. A gas stove can create more pollution indoors than is allowed by outdoor air quality standards. Unburned gas that escapes from appliances contains harmful chemicals other than methane, some carcinogenic. Gas from leaks can asphyxiate, poison, catch fire, or explode. Neighborhood gas distribution systems can leak when damaged by construction activities, landslides, or flames. Electrifying our homes is an important piece of an effective greenhouse gas reduction strategy. That also has health and safety benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Stover.
Good afternoon. My name is Ty Stover, Mayor Pro Tem for the city of Vancouver. Good afternoon. My name is Ty Stover, Mayor Pro Tem. Of the city of Vancouver, Washington. It is my pleasure to come to you today. Representing the entirety of our city council in asking you to. Pass these proposed regulations. The city of Vancouver has set a very aggressive climate target of reducing community. Greenhouse gas emissions by 80% by 2030 and to become carbon neutral by 2040. This, we know that. Our building stock plays a very important role in being able to meet those targets. It is, there is no question that if. All electric is implemented during construction, that it reduces the cost, the long-term cost for. The homeowner and has lower. Greenhouse gas emissions. The, at the same time, the increase in demand will help drive costs down in the market. That will make it easier for existing homeowners to make the transition. I personally am trying to, well, I have a heat pump as my primary source of heat.
Thirty seconds.
I have gas water and gas. Emergency heat, and I'm going through the process of trying to switch those out. And going through the process of having to argue with. Installation companies about my goals and, and being able to shift the mindset in the state will play a big part in helping our homeowners. Thank you very much, and again encourage this passage of this package.
Thank you. Iris Antman.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Your time starts now. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Iris Antman. I'm urging the council to adopt the proposed energy code updates. The time to end fossil fuel use in new buildings is now. The poor air quality in Seattle has kept me indoors for most of the last two weeks. I've lived in Seattle for 40 years and it's so different now. The consequences of global warming resulting from fossil fuel use is a clear and present danger. And we know it will only get worse. The planet is reaching and has already reached tipping points beyond which devastating destruction within the next several decades is probable. You can address the root cause of global warming and the climate crisis. We have the technology and know how to scale the use of electric heat pumps. Please adopt the proposed energy code updates. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jim Lazar.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Your time starts now.
I'm an economist, now mostly retired from a global consulting practice in electric utility regulation. I served on the energy code tag for the 1979, 1986, 1993 code cycle. Each of those were giant steps forward. The 79 code first required floor wall in insulated glazing. The 86 code first implemented moisture control and ventilation. The 93 commercial code took a greatly forward in efficiency with availability of electronic. And variable speed drive for HVAC. Those code improvements were path breaking at the time. They're all old hat today. But they served us well and have saved us millions and millions and millions of dollars and a lot of energy and carbon pollution. The amendments that are before you to require heat pumps and heat pump water heaters are also path breaking. They will give new homeowners the ability to save money and energy and to be more comfortable. It's time for this council to be as courageous as your predecessors in moving codes before, ahead. The naysayers would say this is expensive. Need to understand that electricity and natural gas are expensive. And that the climate impacts of electricity and natural gas are also expensive. Heat pumps are the less expensive option. Please move ahead with these requirements for heat pumps and heat pump water heaters. Your community, your planet, and most of all, your grandchildren will be better off for these decisions. Finally, thank you for the hybrid format. Us old guys still need to be careful.
Thank you. Steve Albrecht. Steve Albrecht. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Thank you to the members of the Building Code Council for having us here today. My name is Steve Albrecht. I'm a retired family physician. I've lived in Thurston County since nineteen eighty-six. And while I have some dedication and interest to personal and public health, much of the testimony you'll hear today, both verbally and in writing, will lend expertise and evidence about how important it is that you adopt these proposals, and I urge you to adopt these proposals. But I'm here today because I'd like to present some kitchen table wisdoms that my parents, Werner and Viola, taught me when I was a young man. And those are very applicable to your decisions today. The first is, double negative aside, there ain't no free lunches. There ain't no free lunches. We cannot burn fossil fuels willingly without paying the price. And evidence is overwhelming that that price is becoming untenable. And there's three I lumped together. Don't be penny wise and pound foolish. Quality costs ten percent less. And it's less work if you do it right the first time. I live in a thirty-year-old house. Friends of mine who testified earlier today live in a hundred-year-old house. The builders, some of whom I've contracted with, talk about the importance of quality. But quality is something that pays the benefits. The most important message was what my mother taught me. Steven, clean up your mess. We've made a mess of our environment and our climate, and this is an important step in cleaning it up. I urge you to adopt these measures. Thank you.
Albert Rooks.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to address the State Building Code Council. On behalf of the members, I am the board president of Pacific Northwest nonprofit organization that began introducing the Pacific Northwest standard to North America about ten to twelve years ago. I'm, I'm here to express support by the entire membership in Washington, Oregon, and the rest of the Pacific Northwest for the residential energy code proposals and especially heat pumps. And, and so thank you very much for your opportunity to speak to that. Our membership is strongly in favor of that. In addition to that, there's only one way to enter my name in. I'm also the CEO of Small Planet Supply. We're a local Washington state business supplying heat pumps. And to also let you know that in twenty twenty-one, we made a major investment here in Thurston County in the city of Ton Water to set up a facility to produce large-scale packaged heat pumps to produce domestic hot water for apartment buildings ranging from five units up to several hundred units. So from the economic standpoint of cost of living in Thurston County, state of Washington, this business, we think, will scale to something in the range of twenty million dollars annually in turnover and provide very good high-tech jobs, high-skill jobs in manufacturing here within the state and within Thurston County. And we have invested heavily in training of employees and, and grown the business substantially. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Andrea Smith. Andrea, your time starts now.
Thank you. Andrea Smith, here on behalf of the Building Industry Association. As I covered earlier, we have about eight thousand members statewide. We're here today to urge the SBCC to not pass the heat pump proposals for reasons already stated by many of our members, line workers and utility companies that have to build and maintain the power lines. If we were to fully electrify the state, we need to consider the consequences. The first being housing affordability, where these energy codes that are currently presented will drive up the cost of the home by a minimum of twenty-four thousand dollars, pricing out thousands and thousands of families from their ability to purchase a home. And second is the risk of more wildfires from the added power lines that we will need to deliver the energy that we need and desire and deserve. California is an example of this. If you simply Google wildfires in California, you will see that the top three causes is power lines. And then the third reason is that an increase in utilities in utility bills each month because of added costs to such green policies like this will increase monthly costs for consumers and for homeowners. Just speaking anecdotally, I live in an apartment currently with a mini-split, and unfortunately, it's gone out twice in the past twelve months that I've lived there, and it's taken at least a week to get an HVAC contractor out to fix it. The first time that happened, it was probably about thirty-five degrees outside. And then the second time it happened, it was in the middle of summer, so not a huge deal, except for the fact that you don't get cooling when it doesn't work. And then the second thing that I would like to address is proposal eighty-four. Moving low-rise buildings with entrances in the interior of the structure to the commercial code could open up the SBCC to potential legal action if this is passed because it would create a variance from CR one oh two and one oh three for the commercial energy code. Thank you.
Chris Feuss.
My name is Chris Feitz. I'm a resident of Olympia, Washington. First, I wanted to thank you for considering the proposal to require new residential construction to use highly efficient heat, heat pumps for heating and cooling. Electric heat pumps are typically two to four times more energy efficient than standard gas heating equipment, and the cost of purchase and install are about the same. Furthermore, investment in this technology only makes it better and cheaper. Does not make sense to lock in customers by installing equipment that is dependent on a single fuel source like natural gas when more flexible electrical, electric alternatives are available. Electricity can be generated in many cleaner ways. We are seeing the effects of this type of inflexibility in the EU right now, brush control of the national gas that commercial and residential customers across Europe are entirely dependent on. Prices are skyrocketing, businesses are shutting down, people will not be able to afford to heat their homes this winter. About ten percent of the US carbon emissions come from burning fossil fuels like natural, natural gas for heating and cooking. Decarbonization of the state's building sector, which is, was the state's fastest-growing source of greenhouse gas emissions between nineteen ninety and two thousand and fifteen is a very important step to reducing our emissions of climate-changing gases. This is the most important issue of our time and the future of all life on the planet. Carbon dioxide has a unique long-term effects on climate change that are nearly irreversible for a thousand years after emissions stop. It's time to start kicking the can down the road. I think this proposal is a step in the right direction. My children and future generations will thank you all for taking this bold first step by voting against this change.
Michael Laurie.
Hey, um, thank you, members of the Building Code Council for giving me this opportunity to testify. My name is Michael Laurie. I'm a resident of Basson Island. I was on the technical advisory group in nineteen ninety-three that revised the non-residential energy code. So I have some detailed experience with these kind of things. I've been a sustainability consultant for over thirty-five years. I've worked on over one thousand energy projects at a wide range of levels, from audits to inspections and to helping even with installations. I've seen many people who made energy efficiency changes and were very happy with the results. But I've also seen some people who are not motivated to take action to address climate change, which to me is one of the reasons that it's important to revise the residential energy code to transition away from fossil fuels to clean energy with this big focus on heat pumps for space and water heat. As I think you know, we are running out of time to make the major progress needed to address climate change. Making climate progress in some sectors like cement, steel, plastics, and fertilizers will take decades. And that is another important reason that we need to act where we have well-proven solutions that will be relatively easy to implement, like energy moves. I say relatively easy because I have a heat pump installed in my home over eleven years ago to replace the oil furnace. It works great. And I know a number of other people who have, I carried out energy audits for, they installed the heat pumps, and they were also very happy with the results. Thanks again for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you. David Cheddar. David Cheddar. Aaron Brain. Aaron Brain. Aaron Brain. Judy Hopkinson.
Hello.
Hi there. Your time will start now.
Thank you. My name's Judy Hopkinson. I'm a retired nutrition scientist, a mother, and owner of a hundred-and-twenty-year-old home in Bellingham, Washington. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and on behalf of a citizens group called Watcom Undaunted. My husband and I have installed both solar panels and heat pumps. The solar panels, some eight years ago, have more than paid for themselves, and we're delighted with the savings we are now enjoying from our heat pumps. In my opinion, it is unconscionable that only people with sufficient money to manage the upfront insulation costs are able to access these savings. It seems as though allowing dwellings to be built without electric heat pumps and at least the capacity to install solar panels is just another way to increase the wealth gap in this country. Perhaps of even greater import, it is now abundantly clear that the use of gas heating and appliances dramatically increases the risk of serious illness in the occupants. For example, children who live in homes with gas stove have a forty percent increased risk of asthma symptoms. An estimated hundred and ten million dollars in health impacts annually can be attributed to burning fossil fuels in commercial buildings in Washington. As a person of faith, I stand on my commitment to equality, economic justice, care for the earth, and compassion. As I call on you and all of us to stand strong and see that our government policies that reflect the values we hold dear. There's always resistance to change, even when change is necessary, and those who sell gas will be affected financially if you take these changes. And they too deserve compassion, but their financial considerations do not outweigh the safety and health of our citizens and the future of our planet. We need to do this, and we need to do it now. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do Oliver. Your time will start now.
Hi, my name is Noah Lever, and I'd like to thank you for having us here and all the work that you've done on these codes. I'm here on behalf of the BIA of Clark County and its seven hundred member businesses and the one hundred and sixty thousand families who will be priced out of the housing market should all of these codes be implemented. Currently, eighty-five percent of Washingtonians cannot afford a home at the median sale price. A safe and healthy place to live is a basic human need. The current cost of regulations, codes, and fees where I work in Clark County is approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and only fourteen percent of our residents can afford to purchase a home at the median sale price. While many of these codes will likely come into play in the future, is now the time to add additional costs, more restrictive regulations, and expensive mandates. Let's look at the actual cost of this cycle of proposed updates, the human cost. For the cost of mandating an electric vehicle supply equipment in all construction, you will, you will be pricing out more than one thousand four hundred Washington families. And for the cost of requiring heat pumps for space and water heating, another eighteen thousand families in our state will be priced out. With homeownership being the most viable and reliable pathway out of poverty, we are fueling a human tragedy if we do not balance the desire of zero with the base, basic human need of shelter. Before moving forward with any of these code updates, I urge you to consider that in total, should you implement these code updates, you will be pricing out more than one hundred and sixty thousand families.
David Cam.
Yes, hi.
Hi, your time starts now. Go ahead.
Thank you for having me. I'm in Spokane, where I helped build Eastern Washington's leading renewable energy contractor, and I'm here today representing three fifty Spokane. We applaud this code update. Our state energy strategy calls electrifying homes and buildings the cheapest way to meet our state goal of reducing emissions ninety-five percent by twenty fifty. Heat pumps are far more cost-effective than gas, often cutting heating bills in half. And because a heat pump replaces both a furnace and an air conditioner, the capital cost is nearly the same. New federal tax credits make heat pumps look even better. We just have an economic disconnect. Owners and renters love heat pump savings, but builders don't see these long-term benefits. And they want more gas company kickbacks. This is a job for a better energy code. Across the US, heat pumps are now in forty percent of new homes. New heat pumps handle the coldest winters of Washington ever seen. Meanwhile, the news on gas just keeps getting worse. Our gas is methane, a greenhouse gas eighty-six times worse than CO2. And the gas system leaks far beyond EPA estimates. A study this week by researchers at Stanford and Arizona State shows that pipelines in the largest US gas field
Thirty seconds.
leak at fourteen times EPA estimates. Heat pumps are the easiest, most cost-effective solution we have. So I urge you to require them. If you want low-hanging fruit, you want heat pumps. Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt Wilson. Kurt Wilson.
This is Kurt.
Hi Kurt, your time starts now.
So, we all can agree that heat pumps are more efficient. There's a cost to that. And the costs to implement these proposed changes are far, they span a, a large area, starting with our energy grid, which is not equipped to handle all electrification that the state continues to mandate, and the electrical companies are telling you this. But it's falling on deaf ears. Your response is simply, you need to figure it out. You all think this is going to affect new construction. A new construction in Washington will somehow put a dent in global greenhouse gas emissions. The rest of the world adversely counteracts our efforts, and as such, the cost benefit does not exist. This is being done at the expense of roofs over people's heads because they simply can't afford these mandates. Furthermore, new construction is not the one who will carry the cost burden of these mandates as you're portraying. It's at the expense of the consumer. The citizens of Washington will undoubtedly pay higher electric rates in the future and could be faced with rolling blackouts like California and the, and the rest, and the result of cumulative mandates and desires of the state. Whereas Sally and Joe Public in the outreach process on this effort, electric car charging on top of the proposed changes will undeniably increase the loads and demand on the energy grid and infrastructure, which is not sized for the sudden change in load demands. The lack of acknowledgement of this and ignoring or silencing the utilities is utter negligence, in my opinion. I think we need to take this one step at a time. We are enforcing too many mandates too quickly, driving attainable housing out of the, off the grid here. And while we're talking at the legislative level about the need for housing and bringing more housing and dealing with the homelessness crisis, we're countering that by increasing regulation unnecessarily without a cost benefit analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Engelfreit. Nick Engelfreit.
Hi, this is Nick. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Your time starts now.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to testify, council. I am urging the council to support the proposed code update. As others have said, climate change is not a future problem anymore. It's here today. I was recently visiting Chukka Creek in Aurora Park during Bellingham, where I live. This is a creek that chum salmon will soon be migrating up to reach their spawning grounds. If they're not in the creek already, there is barely any water in the stream bed. I am scared to think, yeah, how many salmon are going to die, how many eggs are not going to survive because of the drought that we're having in the Northwest this year. Up in BC, they're already seeing thousands of, of salmon dead in their streams because of low water levels. This is a crisis that affects our ecology, but it also affects our industries that rely on salmon. It affects anyone who cares about the healthy environment. We need to curb carbon emissions and emissions from buildings are a big part of the problem that needs to be addressed. These code updates are a big step in the right direction and I urge the council to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Mopau, Mopox, say that I apologize.
He's on, he's in our panel, but he's not on.
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Michael. Your time starts now.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, council members, and thank you for this opportunity to testimony. My name is Michelle Mopou and I have been a resident in Vancouver for 30 years. I'm a grandfather and a retired solar energy engineer. I taught thermodynamics and experienced the impact of climate change in many places over the years from the tropics to our latitude. My 30-year-old Vancouver house is now net zero with improved insulation and windows, a ductless mini split heat pump, a heat pump water heater, and rooftop solar. So I'm aware of the benefits of all of those. Because of Washington State's commitment away from fossil fuels, clean electricity within the next decades, I do recommend including heat pumps in the building code for the following advantages as compared to natural gas appliances. It's better for the planet as it reduces emissions of greenhouse gases to slow down climate change. It's better for residents' health as it reduces the presence of methane in the air. It's better for safety as it poses no danger in case of an earthquake or power outage. And it's better for consumers' pocketbooks as it is cheaper to operate in the long run. In addition, the building code should keep pushing on better energy efficiency by improving insulation, but also encouraging solar gain in winter and reducing solar gain in summer with window orientation, shading, reflective windows treatment, etc. Otherwise, with climate change and everybody using AC, peak energy demand will move from winter to summer like in the south of the US and overall building energy use will creep back up. And if this council can influence it, I would recommend setting up a mandatory energy rating of every housing unit, which would have to be published before the sale like in Europe so that buyers know.
That's your time, thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize for the pronunciation. Mike Peterson.
Yeah, hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm Mike Peterson. I live in Spokane. I have a master's degree in mechanical engineering specializing in thermodynamics. I support the building code changes that require heat pumps in new home construction. While I guess furnace-based heating system is at best 95%, modern heat pumps are upward of 450% efficient. Nearly half the new multifamily buildings in the US and more than 40% of new single-family homes are being built with heat pumps according to a November 2021 International Energy Agency report. So that confirms what David Camp just said. Heat pumps have an added bonus that they act as cooling systems during the summer. Modern heat pumps are designed to accommodate the low and high temperatures that Spokane has. One expert says that if you regularly experience winter outdoor temperatures below minus 10 degrees F, then you might need fossil fuel heating systems. We don't have those temperatures in Spokane or anywhere in Washington, so heat pumps are appropriate across our state. The cost of heat pumps can run between $8,000 to $16,000. So claims that they will cost up to $70,000 are unfounded. And there will be rebates of up to $7,500 under the Inflation Reduction Act. Our grid can withstand the new home construction addition of heat pumps. The facts are just right there for it. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment and please adopt the proposed code.
Thank you. Ursula Uller. Ursula Uller. Christina Mateo. He's logged in, but. Hey, you can go ahead and unmute your mic, Christina.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, thank you. Your time starts now.
Thank you. I'm not sure how to turn my camera on, so I'm just gonna start that. Good afternoon, members of the State Building Code Council. Thank you for providing this opportunity for testimony. My name is Christina Mateo and I work for FMS Global Strategies, a BIPOC firm who represents many residents of Washington State where equity, clean energy, and environmental justice is concerned. Many Washington State residents and families of color are directly affected by these state building codes. I urge you to adopt the proposed energy code updates because moving away from methane gas in our buildings is important for addressing the climate crisis. These code proposals are also important for health reasons because they will play a key role in de-incentivizing gas cooking, which many studies have documented is harmful for health due to the economics of hooking up just gas for cooking. Lower-income households may also be at a higher risk of exposure to gas stove pollution because of smaller unit sizes, more people in homes, older homes that don't have great ventilation, and then using stoves or ovens for supplemental heat because you don't have a heat pump. Gas stoves release unburned methane through leaks even when they're off. Research shows that yearly leaks yearly leaks from gas stoves in the US could have as much of a climate impact as emissions from 500,000 passenger vehicles. Additionally, energy codes focus on how energy is used in homes and buildings and strengthening energy codes is a key way to minimize energy waste. Constructing efficient and quality buildings means lower energy bills for tenants and residents. Transitioning to clean energy is imperative for all Washington State residents, old, young, you know, people who will have to live on this planet after many of us are gone. So thank you for your time and your leadership and I hope you adopt these codes.
Thank you. Bob Disney. Bob Disney.
Just logged in, not unmuted.
Bob, you can unmute your mic. Bob Disney. John Frankel.
John Frankel from Northwest Natural. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, your time starts now.
As members of the council, you should be informed by data, not dogma. Unfortunately, you lack the data required by statute to make an informed decision. We don't have the cost analysis, so you have to rely on the bias of proponents asserting that heat pumps are more cost-effective and that there are no negative impacts on housing affordability or commerce. We simply lack the required third-party analysis needed for this very dramatic code change. There is a data point that is critically important to your decision. According to the most recent report from the Washington Department of Ecology, the proposed measures to electrify space and water heating homes could reduce greenhouse gas emissions by only a very small amount. All direct use of gas in the Washington residential segment accounts for 4.9% of the state's greenhouse gas emissions. The proposed residential code affects only new construction, so the emissions reduction could be less than 2% of the state's greenhouse gas emissions. And despite this surprisingly low level, the Washington Gas Utilities acknowledge a climate imperative and are committed to decarbonizing. The Climate Commitment Act does mandate that gas utilities decarbonize, just like CETA requires that the electric utilities decarbonize. And of course, we'll comply with the law. Of course, we file detailed plans with regulators. Northwest Natural recently filed a very detailed resource plan showing how we will meet demand and comply with a decarbonization mandate. So why are you being asked to restrict choice of natural gas for space heat and water heat? Well, the action will reduce a less than 2% reduction in emissions, offers unknown cost effectiveness, no understanding of the impact on housing equity and affordability, no consideration for the impact on labor or business, and it does not consider the likely impact of power resource adequacy, and it restricts choice and design options for homeowners and home builders. So as voting members, if you don't believe that there is a data-informed reason to restrict choice of fuel for space and water heating homes, you should not approve the CR 102 as presented. Thank you.
Deborah Hennig. Deborah, your time starts now.
My name is Deborah Hennig. I represent Heart Industry Products and I'm a board member of the Northwest HPBR. I've been in the alternative heating industry for 40 years. In the process of moving towards your goal of full electrification, we all talk about the costs on both sides of the issue, the cost of the environment and to the affected businesses. The real cost here is for the families at risk. When I say that, we think of a certain group of individuals. In reality, all families are at risk in the scenario you are creating. How many of the lives lost in the Great Texas Freeze were considered at risk before the event took place? Supplemental heating in Washington State is a necessity that has been ignored in these regulations. By incentivizing all electric homes, you are creating an environment where consumers have no safe backup heating to protect the lives of their families. Electric heating is the reason our industry exists. Heat pumps do not work effectively in our damp climate below 40 degrees or during a power failure. Energy-efficient freestanding gas stoves and fireplaces are a low-cost, non-electric option that has been proven to work for decades. My furnace failed four years ago for seven days. Each day it was 18 to 22 degrees. Luckily, I had a natural gas fireplace and I was able to heat my home and do it with no power and 60% less fuel than my furnace currently uses. Because of COVID, we have been taught to shelter in place to avoid large indoor crowds and to maintain a safe social distance. Many Washingtonians won't risk going to a neighbor's home, let alone an overcrowded warming shelter and a power outage. These families are now at risk with no backup source of heat. That choice has been stripped from them. Are these families, like those trapped in the Texas freeze, considered acceptable losses? We know from experience, consumers will protect their families any way they can. It would be best to provide them with safe backup heating equipment. A language in the code needs to allow for gas lines in new homes and for gas freestanding stoves and fireplaces to be installed for use during cold weather and power outage.
Keith Sanderson. Keith Sanderson.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, your time starts now.
Thank you, council members. Hello, my name is Keith Sanderson and I'm testifying in support of updated residential codes that mandate heat pumps for space and water heating. Thank you for providing this opportunity to testify today. I'm a current student at the University of Washington and I plan to continue my education to become a healthcare professional. I speak today for myself and future medical and public health professionals, all of whom will inherit the consequences of climate-influenced diseases. It is absolutely essential that we remove gas from our homes. The climate crisis is already wreaking havoc on our communities and the health consequences of climate change-related events are overloading our hospitals, overworking our doctors and nurses, and most importantly, the reducing the quality of life of so many families across the state. Not only will denying these proposals allow more climate-warming greenhouse gases to enter our atmosphere, it will also continue to make our community sick. I grew up in Arizona, so I am no stranger to hot summers. Since being a student at UW, I have had the privilege of enjoying the relatively cooler summers of Seattle, though even in my short time here, the summer heat has become increasingly worse and the absence of cooling in most buildings in the Pacific Northwest worries me as Washington and the world begin to heat up rapidly. Not only are we not prepared for the increasing heat, we are also reliant on the very thing that is causing our climate to warm, fossil fuels. Heat pumps for space and water heating would reduce the reliance on fossil fuels and lead to cooler, more efficient, and healthier buildings. Overlooking the health burdens of keeping our societies glued to fossil fuels would be an egregious wrongdoing. So today, I urge you to adopt this proposal so we do not lead future citizens and families into a polluted and scorching world. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Marina.
He's here, but he stepped out of her minute.
Okay, welcome back to Robert. Ray Allshouse.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, your time starts now, thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, members of the council. Let me start by, as a prior member of the Building Code Council and chair, let me thank you for your service. I realize what the effort that you have to put in and and offer my appreciation for the inspire state of Washington. My name is Ray Allshouse. I'm the building official for the city of Shoreline and I'm speaking on behalf of the entire city council of Shoreline in recognition and support of the work of the Residential Energy Code Tag. You can add Shoreline to that list of cities that are basically 100% behind this. I won't elaborate on the reasons. You've already heard them. I will point out that due to the minimaxy restrictions of the state law regarding the Residential Energy Code, the legislature is depending on your action to further progress towards the achievement of their energy-saving goals. And in fact, it's the only reason that we haven't adopted adopted more stringent residential requirements in Shoreline is because we're restricted from it by state law. So we urge your support and speaking for them, the entire council and the more or less 60,000 residents of the city of Shoreline, please support these changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Brett LeBeg from our here sign up.
Who's that?
Brett LeBegway. He was several pages out. I'm here, Robert Marina.
Okay, we'll get to you in just a second. Thank you, sir.
Brett? Yes, okay.
Brett, if you're available.
Yes, I am. It's Brett LeBeg. Here, am I coming through?
Your time starts now, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning or afternoon it is now, Mr. Chair and the council. I'm Dr. Brett LeBeg, a public health physician with Washington Physicians for Social Responsibility. We urge you to electrify our buildings. I'm the grandson, son, and brother of a family of builders. During my 40-year medical career, I've remodeled every home I lived in. I used to heat and cook with gas. It's fast, easy. We used to think it was clean. Now we know better. We have better choices. Although liquid fuel transportation is still responsible for most of the greenhouse gases, methane gas in our homes and apartments is dangerous to our health. Unvented gas cooking produces nitrogen oxides, carbon monoxide, and fine particulates that damage lungs, hearts, and brains, especially in pregnant women and babies. Doctors make decisions based on facts and evidence. Indoor air is often worse for our health than the fresh outdoor air, except when the smoke, whether it's a COVID virus, chemicals in paint and carpets mold, or burned hydrocarbons from a stove. New building codes can help prevent illness from combustion byproducts by requiring non-polluting, clean electric appliances in new homes and commercial buildings and remodels powered by hydro, wind, and solar. Clean electric heat pumps and stoves can keep us warm and safe. Please make the right choice with the right codes for our generations in the future and good health indoors. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have Bob Disney make it in? Yes, Bob Disney.
Hi.
Your time starts now, thank you, perfect.
Thank you. My name is Bob Disney. I own seven Washington State corporations, one of which is an electrical company, the other a general contracting firm. I have a degree in manufacturing and I sit as vice president for the Kitsap Builders Association and the Washington State Affordable Housing Committee. Currently, in Kitsap County, I have the least expensive homes, considered starter homes. For 1,279 square feet, the cost of construction is $315,000 or $246 a square foot. With my land, I have $376,000 into these homes. We've priced them with no profit to afford some first-time home buyers the chance to buy a home. We have $430,000. We don't have any buyers. Right now, 15% of people in Washington State can only afford to buy a home. Every time we add any money to the cost of building these homes, it just takes more buyers out of the pool. I, I think it would be also wise to say that the R32 that we use today has gone up, that's for the refrigerant for heat pumps, has gone up 195% in the last year alone and China's the sole source provider of that. I, I think we should probably I think we should probably mandatorily adopt plans like heat pumps, but we should spread it out over time, keep the cost of housing down. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert.
Robert, I just start us now. Uh, thank you, thank you to the council for your time. My name is Robert Marino and I am the Clean Energy and Infrastructure Director at Thursday Climate Action Team in Olympia. So the big one, according to researchers, has a ten to seventeen percent chance of devastating Western Washington in the next fifty years. And by the big one, I mean a nine-point-zero magnitude earthquake of the Cascadia Subduction Zone. I recently read that a gas pipeline exploded in Washington, I believe it was earlier this year, there was a fatality. And they think that, um, like the leading cause for why uh, the gas line exploded was from falling ice. So if some ice can fall and cause a gas line explosion and kill someone, imagine what a big one, what, what the big one would do. We have safer alternatives, but please adopt the full plate of updated WSEC R codes. Thank you.
Say Warren Shea? Warren Shea?
Good afternoon, members of the state.
Your time starts now.
Good afternoon, members of the State Building Code Council. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I've been a resident of Bellingham and Waukesha County for twenty-eight years. I strongly urge you to adopt the proposed energy code updates. You've already heard dozens of fact-based technical reasons why we should do so. Eliminating methane gas in new homes and buildings will significantly reduce climate pollution in Washington. And we're running out of time to address this issue. We can no longer sweep it under the rug. We must constantly ask ourselves, what kind of world are we leaving behind for our kids and grandkids? The correct course of action is obvious. I beseech you to make these crucial changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Lutton?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, your time starts now.
My name is Larry Luton. I've lived in Spokane for over thirty years and am a volunteer with Three Fifty Spokane, a climate policy advocacy group. There is no better way to reduce the impact of climate change between now and twenty fifty than to curtail the use of methane. Buildings are the fastest growing source of greenhouse gas emissions in Washington State. Much of their emissions result from the use of methane to heat buildings and water in those buildings. Please adopt a new energy code requiring electrification of buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Alejandra Cunningham?
Good afternoon. This is Alejandra Mahiak Cunningham and I am here testifying. In, can you hear me?
Yes, sorry, your time starts now, go ahead.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Alejandra Mahiak Cunningham and I am here testifying in support of the building electrification requirements in this latest Residential Energy Code on behalf of the Natural Resource Defense Council and our more than five hundred members and activists from Washington State that have submitted public comments urging you to adopt this new code. We know that burning fossil fuels in homes is damaging to Washingtonians' health and to our climate. Children that lives, live in homes that use gas for cooking have a forty-second, forty-two percent higher chance of experiencing asthma symptoms than those who do not. Further, we know that that's very same onsite burning of fossil gas is a leading cause of the climate crisis that is, that has already taken lives in Washington State. The requirements before you today will only make it easier for homes and other buildings in Washington State to be built efficient and all-electric from the start, which we know is more affordable today than building with gas. For those reasons, I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Braddock? Pat, your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Pat Brownock and I'm the owner of Kirkland Fireplace and a member of the Northwest Heart Patio Barbecue Association. Um, we've been in business for forty-three years selling fireplaces and wood stoves, gas stoves for, for many years. Consumers want options and not having a choice to either supplement their home heating with natural gas or make it more a primary option to heating their home. Using an alternate heating appliance like a gas fireplace, gas insert or gas stove, instead of turning on a furnace, one room is more economical. Currently, there is no electric option like gas as a supplement. Consumers want to have the ability to heat their homes with, when there is no power and for consumers, gas is less expensive to install and operate than propane or wood products as an alternative. Building and remodel contractors wanted to be able to offer the customers every possible option allowed to the consumer to build their dream home they've always wanted. If you restrict gas appliances, you've taken away that option. What will be the effect to small business selling or servicing gas appliances? Has anyone done a cost analysis to see the impact to those businesses currently selling or servicing gas appliances? Gas fireplaces, gas inserts, gas stoves, not cooking stoves, can be up to fifty to eighty percent of some business and stores in the fireplace industry. What will happen to the employees who are trained to do this, this type of work? Who will pay to retrain them for a different career? What happens to the business that support the retailers and warehouses? We work with a local manufacturer that employs seven hundred people. What impacts for this business, job losses? The Washington Standard Code should be revised to ensure the ability for homeowners, builders, uh, to put back up natural gas heating into their homes and the event of power outages. Gas inserts, fireplaces, uh, remain viable options for this. They were perfected during power outages.
Thank you. Justin Willis?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the SBC. Thank you for being here today, allowing us to provide testimony for public comment. I'm not here to debate the Washington State Energy Code, heat pump versus natural gas versus electric. My name is Justin Willis. I actually own a custom construction company. I'm the Lorries Loan Originator. And among many other things, many hats I wear. I was sitting here four years ago, testifying to everybody, talking about where we'd be at today's time, about how affordability is going to affect Washingtonians, and here we are. Your testimony earlier about how that affected people in buying homes first time, both refinanced, cash out, multiple types of loans. So I changed my testimony today more so to the tune of affordability. So the average income in Pierce County, where I live, is about ninety-three thousand dollars a year in housing. That individual back in January, early first part of January, who put about three-point-two-two percent origin, or I'm sorry, loan, with a twenty percent down on a thirty-year fixed rate, could afford a five-hundred-thousand-dollar home. About a twenty-seven-hundred-dollar month payment. Fast forward ten months from now, here we are at the rates now historically twenty years higher. That rate, that broker's rate yesterday was about seven and a quarter. The same scenario allows that same individual, the same exact scenario, to now afford three-hundred-twenty-two thousand dollars. There's nothing on the market for three-hundred-twenty-two thousand dollars in Pierce County. I deal with families every single day begging, pleading of ways to try to come up to just simply afford a home. So what I ask in all of this, I was appalled by the fact that I didn't hear about it, but there's a table, what I would like to see put into the building state code of about prescriptive path, not just, I'm sorry, performance-based, not prescribed. I believe with a performance-based model, we can, we can curtail all these affordability issues and actually get down to it and then build good, efficient homes without having to chase credits and energy tables and make it affordable for everybody going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joseph Swaja? Joseph, go ahead and unmute.
Hi.
Joseph, your time will start now.
Hi, I'm a retired high school teacher and my testimony is in the form of a song I wrote. Hey friends, we got to electrify a climate solution is in front of our eyes. We must electrify all of our Washington houses. You know, you've got to electrify. Can't let another year go by, no. Think of all our sweet grandchildren and even their spouses. Now unnatural gas. It sure is a fossil fuel, y'all. Don't let their industry greenwash us and play us all the food. You electrified all our large stores and buildings, extending now the housing for all of our children. Thank you, SBC, for helping electrify.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you enough to electrify SBC.
Thank you. Devin Kellogg?
Hi there, it's hard to follow that act. Wow.
Devin, your time will start now, thank you.
Okay, hello, council members. My name is Devin Kellogg. Thank you for listening to my testimony today in favor of the heat pump and range ventilation proposals. As a parent and a teacher, I echo the feelings and lyrics of the previous speakers, but I'd like to add testimony today on a practical matter of cost and health. I'd like to describe for you what life is like as an asthma sufferer on a budget in an older gas service home without air conditioning. During our now standard heat waves, my family and I rely on opening the windows during cooking and at night to cool off to ventilate our home. Faced with increasingly warm nights and smoke, as we currently have from fires, our home becomes intolerable to live in. Add a gas stove in the mix and the indoor air becomes toxic. And I suspect how I ended up with asthma in the first place. It gets so bad at times that my hands and feet swell up and my breathing becomes labor just walking through my own home. In the winters, when our methane gas furnace kicks on, my asthma again goes into overdrive. Plus, the price of gas heating increases our monthly cost of four times the summer rate. The cost of standardizing heat pump and fan installations and new constructions is negligible compared to the cost of folks like me who are now faced with expensive upgrades just to protect me and my family's basic health. Condo owners and renters have even less options. My, these proposals would also reduce monthly utility and healthcare bills and lost wages. Plus, they would help stabilize the skyrocketing insurance and home repair costs resulting from the climate effects of putting more heat trapping gases into our atmosphere. The code proposals address these health and cost concerns and are necessary to prevent more harmful warming effects. We can overcome any technical or digital challenges much more easily than we can overcome climate chaos. Please vote to adopt. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Kenefig?
Uh, hello, my name is Leslie.
Your time starts now, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Leslie. I'm a second-year medical student in Spokane, Washington. I'm also a part of Health Equity Circle, which is a multi-state, interprofessional, student-led organization and we kind of seek to address issues of health equity. Um, I urge you to adopt the proposed energy code updates because of the long-term impacts of methane gas on our health and our planet itself. Um, long-term exposure to nitrogen dioxide has been linked to heart failure, asthma and many other morbidities, some of which we may have not even identified yet. Uh, furthermore, the impacts of gas disproportionately affect low-income communities of color and those who rent rather than own. Um, additionally, fracking practices often directly impact indigenous communities who may not have a say in those practices. As a future Washington State physician, I want to see all of our communities able to live health, helpful lives and that goes hand in hand with good air quality. Uh, thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Jeffrey Short?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Your time starts now, thank you.
My name is Jeffrey Short and I'm an English professor in Spokane and I'm also with Three Fifty Spokane. I want to thank the members of the council for providing this opportunity for public input and I'm speaking strongly in favor of the proposed energy code updates because I want the council to consider the role that state-level institutions have to play in mitigating the ongoing climate crisis. It's my understanding that the council meets every three years to update the code. As a college instructor, many of my students will be graduating the time, the next time the code is up for review and I worry about how much worse the effects of climate change could get by then. So I strongly urge the council to adopt the proposed energy code updates because we can't afford to wait another three years. We can't afford three more years of wildfires, droughts, floods and inaction exacerbated exacerbated by greenhouse gas emissions. As a teacher at heart, I ask you to consider your role in giving our state's future graduates a world that's actually worth living. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Orange?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Your time starts now, thank you.
Excellent. Um, my name's Don Orange. Um, I am a port commissioner with the Port of Vancouver. I am not speaking today. Uh, as a port commissioner, I'm speaking personally. Um, I'm a former small business man. I made my living fixing cars for a long time. We're going to shift to cars. But the main point that I'd like to come to, uh, coming from Vancouver, we're working really hard at doing a lot about this. My mother worked in the shipyards, uh, because she wanted to preserve our way of life here. My dad sailed on liberty ships for, for the coming generation to protect their way of life. It's our job as, as adults to preserve a decent place for our kids to live. I urge you, uh, to adopt this proposal. Uh, certainly there are challenges. We better rise to them. Uh, let's be the adults in the room. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Luke Howard?
Good afternoon.
Okay, go ahead. Your time starts now, thank you.
Members of the Washington State Building Code Council, my name is Luke.
Oh, we lost you, Luke. You're losing completely, you're?
I'll leave it back in there.
Okay. Luke, can you hear me?
Am I back?
Yes, you are, Luke. Go ahead.
I might, I might be having bandwidth issues, so I'm going to turn my video off.
Okay, Luke, go ahead.
My name is Luke Howard with the Washington State Department of Commerce. I am providing testimony in support of the package of proposals that have been reviewed by the state, by the Energy Code Technical Advisory Group on behalf of the Department of Commerce State Energy Office. I've been involved in the energy code development, technical assistance and training for over a decade. The package of proposals put forward by the tag reflect necessary changes for the two thousand and twenty-one Residential Energy Code to make forward progress in meeting the requirements of RCW nineteen-point-two-seven-A-point-one-six-zero and put the state on the path towards meeting our greenhouse mission limits. Furthermore, these proposals align with the recommendations of the state energy strategy for the building sector published by the Department of Commerce in two thousand and twenty-one as required by law. The deep decarbonization analysis conducted as part of the strategy, uh, strategy process found that incremental improvements in residential code are important to providing broad benefits to all housing types and the least cost approach to implementing energy efficiency and carbon reduction in buildings. I urge the State Building Code Council to adopt this package and I invite you to follow up with either myself or Liz Reichardt, Senior Energy Policy Specialist of the Department of Commerce, if you have questions about the state energy strategy or meeting statutory requirements. Thank you.
Second, oh, thank you. Joyce Timson? Joyce? Carolyn Loeb? Good, Carolyn, your time starts now.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the council. My name is Carolyn Logan. On behalf of the Washington Air Conditioning Contractors Association, it's an association of H V A C contractors around the state, just expressing some concerns specifically with the fact that you're mandating heat pumps in this proposal with limited exceptions. Currently, the L N I Electrical Code does not allow H V A C specialty electricians to connect the indoor and outdoor units of Douglas Mini Split Systems. This needs to change before you do any mandate of this type because otherwise you will have a workforce problem. In addition, we have to wait for O one or O two electricians to come out, even though these H V A C technicians are trained on how to do this work. And you would have to have the, basically what happens right now is the wall sits open. The H V A C technician runs the refrigerator line, the wall sits open until the other electrician could come out. That is going to be an expensive endeavor, and it's unnecessary if we can wait until this code is, until that is changed before doing a mandate of heat pump systems. They also require, there's a lot of things that have to, there's a lot of supply chain disruptions with heat pumps. We've already been before the council several times having discussed this. There's the H S P F two, the new requirements and efficiency standards. We need a crosswalk that goes into place that we know and we all feel comfortable with before we have a mandate of this type. We need to also make sure that there's a way to provide flexible options in the event that there is some sort of building that is being built, a house or something in some area where where more exceptions need to be. The code option, the options table right now already drives towards electrification. To mandate the specificity of heat pumps actually create, we believe is going to create more problems going forward than solutions, and there needs to be some time before we move that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Seth Pedaney. Seth Pedaney.
Locked in, but not unmuted.
Seth Ingoanamio. Seth Pedaney. Come back then. Mike Nagram.
Skip Jennifer a little bit. I had Jennifer on here, but she's not logged in. Okay, I just want to make sure. I'm Mike Dick from here. I'm new for West. University graduate, construction management, nineteen seventy-seven, played a little football while I was there. And part of being a, I told dogs, part of being a football player in Washington, we have captains on the team, and the captains are on the field of play. They lead from the front. As you all look at this proposal, I expect as captains and leaders in the industry that you yourselves will step up and for implementing this program, you yourselves will convert your homes to full electricity. And I expect every single person who spoke on support of this, they themselves will have their homes be fully electric before he implements this proposal. Anything less lies in hypocrisy is unattainable. Now, one guy said there's no free lunch. You're right. I am a builder in Seattle. I built Bill Green since twenty twenty-two, and I built lead certified office building in City of Billy. First one to do that in city's history. You're looking at a full electrification house. The average upgrade for rain first hot water tank and electric vehicle charger will blow through a two hundred amp panel. For the three hundred amp panel, you're going to have to replace your service strike, your transformer. If you go out in the street, you have to dig up the street and replace transformer and the bolt that's in the street. Yes, sir, you will hit seventy thousand dollars. I know I am your real estate developer. So please, before you don't permit this code, I want to see all you folks with the blue shirts. You do it yourselves first. There's nothing right now stopping you from doing it yourself. There was nothing that required me to be a Bill Green builder twenty-two years ago, nor did anybody tell me to be lead certified. You don't need this regulation to move ahead. And those who want to do it, go right ahead. By the way, I'll leave a few business cards here because I would just love to get the contracts. Seventy thousand dollars, I get a little bit of profit in there, right there.
That's your time, thank you. Robin Briggs.
We have Seth.
Hi, can you hear me?
Robin, I apologize. We had Seth come in. It was just before you. He just showed up, so we're going to go with Seth Pedaney, and then we'll come to you. Okay, Robin?
Okay, great. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Your time starts now, thank you.
Thank you. Seth Bedaney, I'm the Climate and Energy Manager for the City of Bellingham. Our city's climate action plan calls for electrification of all new buildings, Bellingham, to meet our carbon pollution reduction targets. Forty percent reduction by twenty thirty and eighty-five by twenty fifty. We've made progress in the area of electrification, passing local codes that require electrification of commercial and large multifamily buildings, following good work done in Seattle and other areas. And we're really pleased that the State Building Code Council expanded this requirement statewide for those building types. And while we've made really good progress for large multifamily and commercial, we're prohibited from creating local codes for single-family and small multifamily. Every new building that's built using gases, space and water heating represents a city sanctioned long-term carbon emission source as well as a potential financial risk should these buildings need to be converted to electricity as a fuel at a later date. So in order to achieve our long-term targets, we support code changes that'll ensure that every new home or unit built is using heat pumps for space and for water heating. We support policy, alternative funding sources, and supplemental programs that'll make all electric homes more affordable for all Washington residents. We see work completed through the Rocky Mountain Institute that shows that all, that all electric homes are no more costly to build or to power over their lifetimes than mixed-fuel homes. To encourage the Washington State as a whole to go further and use the Incoming Inflation Reduction Act to make electrification for new homes even cheaper through rebate and other programs. We do want to acknowledge that the proposed electrification, electrification changes will lead to some and the city is transitioning, is looking at ways.
Thank you.
Just.
Robin Briggs.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, your time will start now, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Robin Briggs. I live in Seattle. Thank you, council members, for hearing our testimony today. I'm speaking in support of the new residential building codes for electric heat pumps for space and water heating. This is a better solution. It's better for the people who will live in the homes who will have cleaner air in the house, cooler air in the summer. A previous commenter made it clear that this can be life-saving and lower fuel prices. And as we sit here in the fifth month of summer, staying indoors because the air quality is so poor, we understand that this is critical for all of us. We need to pay heed to what is going on around us, and the proposed new rules represent a small step towards a better future with a better quality of life. Please support these new codes with requirements for heat pumps and better ventilation for gas stoves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dalton Smith.
Yeah, here I am.
Dalton, your time is starting now, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Dalton Smith, and I work for Connor Homes, a second-generation local home builder. As you have heard, our industry is facing major supply chain issues across the board. Builders are trying to work around the supply issues, but the Energy Code doesn't allow enough flexibility, which is forcing all builders to buy certain products. For example, many builders are installing electric heat pump systems to meet the current Energy Code requirements. Being forced into electric houses raises concerns about our aging power grid, and it doesn't help that our state is ranked very low for solar power potential. With that said, the more immediate issue is that many manufacturers aren't producing and supplying systems that meet the current Energy Code requirements. This has forced some of our subcontractors to switch to brands they don't typically work with, which in turn has reduced their buying power and caused many issues as their installers must learn how to correctly set up these new systems. With the ongoing supply chain issues, home builders need flexibility in sourcing these systems so that we can continue to deliver homes to buyers. As of September twenty twenty-two, it's estimated that there is less than a two-month supply of houses in King County. Another important factor is the comfort of the house. The feedback we have received from buyers is that the hybrid heat pump water heaters can't supply enough hot water for families and don't work unless the homeowner puts the tank in full electric mode, thus defeating the energy savings. Tankless water heaters were much more popular with buyers due to the increased availability of hot water, but the Energy Code requirements are forcing many builders into using hybrid water heaters. Housing affordability is another big concern. Rising material costs, labor costs, and most recently, interest rates have all hurt affordability. Continuing to increase the Energy Code requirements at this pace with these limited options is increasing the cost to new home buyers. With those things in mind, I ask you to consider the larger implications of the Washington State Energy Code. California, Texas, and Colorado have already shown what happens when the power grid is overloaded. These changes will have major impacts to our power grid, to our ability to deliver houses to buyers, to the comfort of homeowners, and to the affordability of houses in a market that is already.
Kevin Dwell.
Yes, Kevin Dwell, Northwest Natural Residential Code Tag member.
Devin, your time starts now, go ahead.
Thank you, the council, for this opportunity to provide testimony. I have some very specific comment about Proposal eighty that requires water heaters to be installed within the thermal envelope to capture standby losses from the tank. This makes sense, but there's a problem. Gas heat pumps are allowed by Proposal sixty-five and sixty-six for both space and water heating. There are gas heat pumps on the market for multifamily housing regulated by this code. Also, a gas heat pump for single-family homes is coming in twenty twenty-three. Both types are designed for domestic hot water. Both are designed to be outdoors, and both have virtually no standby losses. Proposal eighty would basically prohibit these gas heat pumps because installing them indoors would be ridiculously expensive. And because there are minimal standby losses, Proposal eighty would fail cost-benefit analysis. High cost, low benefit. Given that, it seems Proposal eighty violates statute, which requires that, quote, "The rule being adopted is the least burdensome alternative," unquote. Therefore, I recommend a change to section R four oh three point five point five, which is to add exception to gas heat pump water heaters with an efficiency greater than or equal to one point one five U E F. This change aligns the intent of the Proposals sixty-five and sixty-six. It corrects a potential statute violation and affirms a code that is technology-neutral while driving efficiency and reducing emissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Hikinen.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Your time starts now.
Thanks very much. My name is Gary Hikinen, and I'm a member of the Energy Code Tag and have been since two thousand fifteen. I'm here to strongly encourage the council to take a close look at the Tag Minority Reports. There were some great improvements in the twenty twenty-one update, but we do have issues with a few of the proposals. We believe that the recommendations in these minority reports provide practical and reasonable alternatives to the controversial proposals being considered. Proposal fifty-two changes the carbon emissions factor for electricity to a highly speculative future number that may not be realized for decades. The current marginal factor for the Northwest is four times higher than proposed. This could actually result in increased emissions after the update goes into effect. We recommend adopting a more reasonable and realistic factor of point eight pounds per kilowatt hour or eliminating carbon emissions as a metric altogether. Proposal sixty-five and sixty-six will ban the use of natural gas and propane equipment for space and water heating. This extreme proposal will take away customer choice, increase cost of construction, and will not eliminate emissions, but simply shift them from one location to another. And with all due respect to those concerned with indoor air quality or suffering from asthma, these heat pump proposals have nothing to do with cooking and will do nothing to improve indoor air quality in the home. The solution to reducing emissions from cooking with either gas or electric stoves is to have a good vent hood installed to exhaust those emissions to the outdoors. We recommend disapproval of the two heat pump proposals. Proposal seventy-eight modifies the energy credits and fuel normalization tables that will result in significant fleet ridership and further complicated enforcement in the code. We recommend striking the fuel normalization altogether to give builders much more flexibility in choosing high-efficiency options. We believe that Washington can still achieve its goal of seventy percent reduction. Thank you.
John Rothlin.
Good afternoon, members of the council. For the record, I'm John Rothlin with Avista. Avista is an electric and natural gas utility that's headquartered in Spokane, and we are urging the council to reject provisions that unnecessarily restrict heating technologies. These provisions warrant further analysis and discussion that should be put off and carried over to the next code cycle. The measures that limit equipment type for space and water heating and demonstrate bias toward electrification do not comport with the statutory requirement to provide flexibility in heating equipment efficiency or the requirement to yield the lowest overall cost to the building owner and occupant. Those are directives for the Building Code under R C W Chapter nineteen twenty-seven A. The proposed changes also fail to recognize the statutory requirement to account for regional climate conditions. Avista serves I B C climate zones five and six in Eastern Washington, which has conditions that are much colder than the marine climate zone along the I five corridor. The efficiency of electric heat pumps is significantly diminished in the regions where our customers live and work. Our annual heating degree days are forty percent higher than Western Washington. Electric heat pumps have to be oversized to account for frequent defrost cycling and the use of auxiliary heat when temperatures are below freezing. In addition, the newer heat pumps for colder climates are still separately, several years away from meeting the needs of our region and requiring additional training and education for this transition to be successful. Even then, the role of natural gas plays in supporting energy reliability in our region will remain critical. I'm just, we'll end by saying that Avista supports thoughtful decarbonization pathways that safeguard energy reliability and preserve jobs and assure energy affordability, but we don't need to eliminate energy choice.
Brian Boltsquad. Brian Boltsquad. Scott Hattonberg.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Your time starts now, thank you.
Okay, my name is Scott Hattonberg. I've lived in Spokane, Washington, north of Spokane for all my life, fifty-five years. I'd like to add a couple things. So I'm a ninety-two grad of Eastern Washington University. I had a professor in physics, and actually, I was magna cum laude while working in the energy industry. Professor of physics said, "Our fuel of the future," I want you to hear this, "our fuel of the future is hydrogen." Those will be transported, he said, in the early nineties by our natural gas lines. What I fear with this thing is we're going to take out all of that potential. We're going to kneecap ourselves from really where we have to go is not electricity because our grid is overgrown. I, and by the way, I lost my grandfather to building this grid. So when people say that there's, you know, no deaths involved, you can't tell that to my family. My grandfather died building this grid. So we have to do that. My, one of my employees, he built a shop because he's in an area, he's lived there thirty-five years, and he's older, he's sixty-five years old, him and his wife, they can't move out. And so he built a shop because people are breaking in from the crime, build a shop. He put up one of these, one of these heat pumps that are supposed to be awesome. It cost him six hundred bucks a month. He had to put on a credit card to go to a natural gas-fired boiler to actually fix it. He's at seventy dollars a month. So when you hear all these beautiful stories about how cheap it is with that, it is not true. These people are on the take. And we have not inspected the duck curve, which is the scientific example of what this will destroy. So I urge you to look at the duck curve. Thank you.
Thank you. Natasha Jackson. Your time starts now.
Thanks, council members, and thank you for this opportunity to share a few thoughts. The N W G A represents the distribution companies and transmission pipelines who are in the energy delivery business, serving warmth and comfort to three point five million residential customers in Washington State. Our members are experts in their customers' needs and advocates on behalf of their interests on this topic. We're also in the energy transformation business, and we're constantly looking for new innovative ways to utilize every available tool to bring cleaner energy to our customers, such as utilizing our forty-five thousand miles of safe, dependable energy delivery infrastructure right under our feet. We bring three arguments to the We bring three arguments to the table here today in regards to C R one oh two. The first is about choice. Consumers and homeowners have the right to choose the type of energy that best suits their energy, their everyday energy needs. It's not this council's role to dictate a person's right to choose the type of energy that is right for them by eliminating some energy options while prioritizing others. Second argument is about grid dependability. With Washington's aggressive climate policies putting more and more strain on the electrical grid, this council will literally put consumer lives on the line during peak cold winter days in this region when the grid fails to deliver what it promises to Washingtonians across the state. And the third and final argument is about equity and small business impact. We implore you to conduct a small business impact analysis and an equity study before moving forward. All climate policies have maintained that equity should be at the forefront of policy change. This case should be no different. The changes to the code will impact access to affordable housing, dependable energy, and a clear clean energy future, which we are all striving for. Respectfully request that this council take a step back on C R one oh two and address all of the concerns mentioned by us and other stakeholders who specialize in energy policy and this kind of work on a regular basis. We'll be submitting written testimony in behalf of the four utilities, diving into further detail about why we stand where we stand on the issue, and I encourage you to take a read. Thank you. Thank you.
Kate Taborova. Davina Doer. She left. Oh, she left. Tessa Dignan. Tessa Dignan. Margot Hill. Margot Hill. John Sable, he left. He let me know at the break he would testify. Danielle Jokela. Danielle Jokela. Brian Emanuel. Brian Emanuel. Thank you.
Chairman Don, esteemed members of the council, thank you for taking the time to patiently listen to the input of so many members of our community. You've heard from builders, engineers, architects, state and local elected officials and staff, health professionals, faith leaders, affordable housing advocates, environmental justice leaders, and others who overwhelmingly support adopting these code improvements, particularly to require heat pumps and spring and ventilation requirements for gas stoves. In addition, over four thousand other residents, including at least sixty-eight local elected officials, have submitted written testimonies in support of these proposals. Note, though, that most of these don't show up individually on the written testimony log because they were batched and submitted together to make it easier on staff. To meet the legally required seventy percent reduction in energy use in construction by two thousand and thirty-one, it's imperative that we start by requiring heat pumps which are three to four times more efficient than gas or electric resistance heat. In addition, the Climate Commitment Act requires gas utilities to reduce emissions ninety-five percent by twenty-fifth. Meet that legal requirement, we must stop digging the hole deeper by continuing to build new buildings with gas. And as you've heard from so many health professionals and environmental justice advocates, we have to stop piping harmful and explosive gas into our homes, especially those of our most vulnerable residents, particularly those with low incomes and those in black ground and indigenous communities who are already disproportionately impacted by poor air quality. You've also heard from many affordable housing advocates calling on you to approve these proposals because the cost analysis indicates they will reduce residents' utility bills over the long term and reduce upfront construction costs relevant to mixed-fuel buildings with A C by an average of seventy-six hundred dollars for an all-electric new home in Seattle and seventy-two fifty in Spokane. Finally, you've heard from at least seventeen builders who have already made the transition to all-electric construction, who are proving every day that all-electric new homes are healthier, safer, and more affordable. Because of the changes you've previously adopted, eighty-eight percent of space heating and eighty-seven percent of water heating in new construction is already electric. Please finish the job by approving these proposals in this total cycle. Thank you again for your time, attention, and service.
Danielle Jokela.
Hi.
Danielle, your time starts now. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Danielle Jokel. I'm a resident of Vancouver. I have fifteen years' experience working in interior design, construction management, facilities management, environmental compliance, and safety. I'm urging you to adopt the energy code updates to move our communities away from fossil fuels. The fossil fuels may be an inexpensive way to heat and cool, but the risks outweigh the benefits. In two thousand and fourteen in Plymouth, Washington, four people were injured and hundreds evacuated as a result of a natural gas explosion. In two thousand and sixteen, two people were killed in Port Orchard. And twice this year, here in Vancouver, entire neighborhoods have been closed down, forcing hundreds of people to evacuate because of dangerous gas leaks. And that's all before we begin to evaluate the risk to individual health from the NOx carbon monoxide and particulate matter that's emitted into our homes when we burn gas. And as we consider the future of our state population growth tackling the housing crisis, we should be developing communities that are future-proof for energy use. This means planning for homes that can adapt to energy solutions that are high efficiency and that won't need to be replaced if we change from hydro power to solar or wind. Electrical solutions also relieve the administrative burden at the municipal level by reducing the amount of infrastructure that needs to be sourced, installed, maintained, built, and collected. Moving away from fossil fuels is not only good sense for our planet, but it makes our communities safer, our homes more affordable, and it relieves administrative burdens at the municipal level. So thank you for letting me speak on the matter.
Senator Lovett.
Thank you so much. Senator Liz Lovett, representing the fortieth district. I'm an Anacortes, representing the San Juans and western portions of Skagit and Watcom counties here in support of these changes. In these past years, we've witnessed unprecedented floods, wildfires, droughts, and heat waves that have cost lives and caused significant economic disruption across our nation and in our state. I represent an area adjacent to the Noxak Basin where we saw floods ravage our communities. And all of these are a result of climate change and the changes in our overall weather patterns. And so we need to be decarbonizing our built environment, and we have a state energy strategy. We have the Climate Commitment Act, the low-carbon fuel standards. And yet we have much ground to gain in our built environment. So I hope that you will continue to press forward on ensuring that we have these new standards in place. Furthermore, the economic impoverishment as a result of climate change is already starting to happen. And the more we can decarbonize and make energy more energy efficiency the standard in our buildings, the less harm we will have on people over time. So as we get to a place where we can provide our grid with more renewable options over time, we also need to make sure that we are reducing the demand and ensuring that folks in their households have the opportunity to have the lowest energy costs possible to ensure a just transition among many different economic factors in our community. So I urge you to adopt these updates. Thank you.
Thank you. We had Jennifer Thomas, a previous woman here.
Yes, thank you. I apologize about that.
Jennifer, go ahead. Your time starts now.
Here. My name is Jennifer Thomas. I'm the Public Relations and Government Affairs Director for the Spokane Home Builders Association. We represent members throughout eastern Washington. We're parents, grandparents, and concerned community members. We're not disagreeing that we should move towards best practice building policies, but those policies should not be mandated restrictions. We are in agreement that we need to leave our planet better than we found it for our children and our children's children by reducing global carbon reductions, by having global carbon reductions. However, adopting these code proposals would not accomplish that objective. They are merely a carbon shift, not a carbon reduction globally. One hundred and ninety-eight of our members from Spokane County have participated in forwarding a letter with strong objections to eight group to code change proposals. I'll refrain from reading it since it has been submitted as written testimony already, but I think that, but I thank you in advance for your diligence and commitment in reviewing perspectives from experts in the home building industry. As you've considered proposals and public input, I request that you pay special attention to statewide housing crises, as you've heard many others talk about today. Experts from the American Public Health Association and the World Health Organization have agreed that affordable housing is essential for good health and for healthy communities. We cannot make housing more attainable while making it more expensive. Because home ownership is out of reach for most of the workforce in the Spokane area and across the state, demand for rental units is driving rent costs. Sadly, the result is that we don't have enough housing especially the most vulnerable, and that is not environmental justice. In closing, I'd like to remind you that the purpose of the State Building Council is to focus on safety, best building practices and energy efficiency, not driving political agendas. As laid out in R C W nineteen twenty-seven oh two, you should, the State Building Code Council should be focusing on minimum performance standards, requiring requirements on performance such as energy efficiencies permit the use of modern.
Your time. Thank you. And Margot Hill. Okay, Margot Hill. Go ahead. Your time starts now.
Hey, I'm Buddhist and Sikh Buddhist and Kali Buddhist. My name is Margot Hill. I'm a Spokane tribal citizen from eastern Washington. I urge you to adopt the proposed energy codes. You know, the emissions that comes from building is one of the fastest-increasing emissions. We have to take a look at climate change. Here in eastern Washington, we are dealing with extreme environmental issues, wildfires, air quality. For climate change, our tribal communities get hit first. They get hit the worst. In western Washington, we see our communities, the acidification of oceans and increased pressures on water systems. Here in eastern Washington, we haven't even done water adjudication. But these energy codes can go a long way into helping our emissions and protecting against climate change. I want to thank all of you at the State Building Code Council for taking the time to listen to our issues for our communities and really consider our impacts on the environment. You know, we have a state energy strategy here in Washington, and you know, we see that there's a large burning of fossil fuels in the building sector. Again, I would just urge you to adopt the proposed energy codes. Thank you all for considering our comments today, and thank you for your hard work. Lem Lumps coming out to heat.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go through the list of those that did not respond when called on. Albert Sardinas. Albert Sardinas. Austin White. Austin White.
It's not the underground car.
Chair in the bell. Chair in the bell. Charlotte Pearson.
That's me.
Pearson, my apologies. Okay, your time starts now.
I'm sure persons, and I live in Olympia, Washington. The board is a chance to make a big impact on our future by helping us transition away from methane gas. Among other health benefits, you can reduce asthma and heart failure from imperceptible low leaks from gas stoves and furnaces. As you've already heard, this transition from methane will also help us meet our Washington State greenhouse gas reduction goals. Passing strong codes for the use of heat pumps is enough opportunity for another twofer. Heat pumps reduce greenhouse emissions and residents' long-term heating and cooling costs. You've heard today about the cost of installation. Eighteen years ago, when I lived in Kelso, I replaced a failing furnace with an electric heat pump. With the help of a small tax rebate, within eight years, my reduced energy bills made up the difference between buying and operating that heat pump and a regular oil or electric furnace. Now, initial costs for heat pumps are lower, and the reduced costs for energy bills come even faster. I urge you to adopt these codes that will have many positive impacts on our future.
Thank you. Madeline Bishop. Madeline Bishop. Ron Perkowitz. Ron Perkowitz. Allison Butcher. Allison Butcher. Patience Malaba. Patience Malaba. Peter Godlusk. Peter Godlusk. Randall King. Randall King. Said Aftai. Said Aftai. Do you have Cody Sims on there?
I did not have that on here.
Okay, Cody Sims. Cody Sims. David Cutter. David Cutter. Aaron Brain. Aaron Brain. Okay, Ryan Holtzclaw. Ryan Holtzclaw. Joyce. Tim Chisen. Joyce Tim Chisen. I said Brian, right? Kate Takareva. Kate Takareva. Davina Doer.
She tested.
Oh, she did. My apologies. Tessa Dignan. Tessa Dignan. John left. It's two oh five. We have a hard stop at four o'clock, so at this time, I'm going to go through the ones that signed up for in-person. If you've already testified on the topic, then this would not be an opportunity to do public testimony again a second time. We're going to start with the. Is that the, do you have the names?
I don't have the names from those.
Since we're on the residential. Since we're on the residential energy code, then we will stick with that.
I'm pretty sure all of those people.
Yeah, regardless of what the heading says, they're all energy.
Yeah.
Okay, Dusty Rhodes.
Good afternoon. And my name is Dusty Rhodes. I'm a resident of Olympia. And. I'm here to speak in favor of adopting. The new regulations to make heat pumps. As well as anything else that we can do to. Further support environmental protection and and reduce emissions. I've been doing research on the climate crisis consistently for the past three years. And sporadically before that, and I would just like to share with with you. Some information that puts this hearing into what I feel is a broader context of. What the world is facing. In 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 the immediate future, the years leading up to twenty thirty. And I'd like to quote from a recent article that just was published by the. In the Proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences, it came out on. On October sixth, and the title of the article is Climate Change and the Threat to Civilization. And in essence. I'm sorry.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Thirty seconds remaining. Okay, basically. What the scientists are saying is that. Because we have for the past forty years. Or and longer not. Face the reality and our and leaders across the world have not. Communicated clearly and taken the steps that we need to take to save the planet. We are now facing collapse. Pardon me?
That's your time. Thank you. All right. Ryan Albrecht.
He already spoke.
You had a Steve Albrecht who spoke earlier. There's a Ryan who wasn't on our list.
Judson spoke. Lisa Ornstein.
One minute, save the world.
Michael Citra. Natasha, you were able to go. Cheyenne Rumors. Rumens. Cheyenne. Okay, I'm going to say these names just one time, being that the room is empty, and this is for in-person testimony sign up. So. We'll go through this pretty quickly. Just for clarification, I am going to read. What code was actually signed up for for the public testimony? If it is a different code, please just clarify when you come up. This is for the International Wildland Urban Interface Code. Edward Hosack. Paula Dutton. Donna Albert. Chad Everhart. Melinda Hughes. Michael Bradley. Pat Braddock. Mark Norelius. This is for the International Mechanical Code and International Fuel Gas Code. Loretta Seppinen. Loretta. Megan Hubbard. This is for the Uniform Plumbing Code. Eric Wallop. Damon Wire. John Saunders. Bob Taylor. This is for the International Residential Code. Kathy Crenn. Horace Wilson. This is for the International Existing Building Code. Randy Herbert. Michael Bertrice. Eileen Perfamet. Phyllis Farrell. Oh, she was, sorry. Daniel Hammer. Drew Stancliff. Jody Robinson. L C Sable. This is for the International Building Code Structural. Art Ratcliffe. Ally L. At this time, we will be taking any further public testimony on Zoom. Or in person. Remember, if you've already commented on a specific code, you get one. One public testimony per code. Not per section. So if you've already gone, then for a code section, then that would not apply to you. We have John. John, will you please state your first and last name for the record and also what code you would like to speak on for public testimony?
Yes, hello, this is John Saunders. I signed up to provide testimony. For the Energy Code in-person testimony. I didn't get on the list also. Sign up in person, but if you'll take my testimony now, I'll go ahead.
Yes, sir. Go ahead. Your time starts now.
I urge you to adopt the proposed energy code updates because moving away from methane gas in our buildings. Is extremely important for addressing the climate crisis. According to the Washington State Department of Ecology, homes and buildings are the fastest growing source of carbon emissions in Washington State. With this increase largely attributable to the direct use of methane gas in appliances like hot water heaters and furnaces. Washington's twenty twenty-one State Energy Strategy found that electrifying homes and buildings is the lowest cost way. To meeting the state's goals of reducing emissions by ninety-five percent. And all electric homes and buildings are a robust and market-ready solution. Buildings are long-lived assets and is much more cost-effective to use the best practices. Transitioning off polluting gas to high-efficiency heat pumps that run on clean renewable electricity will reduce emissions now. These code updates ensure that as we are building new homes, we are doing so sustainably and responsibly. The time is to act is now. We must start the transition towards clean energy in our homes today. And I thank the council for agreeing to hear my testimony.
Thank you, John. Will you repeat your last name and spell it for the record?
I will. My last name is Saunders. S A U N D E R S.
Thank you. And we have Mark Jung, who I believe was going to testify and signed up under the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Mark, your two minutes will start and just clarify what code you'll be speaking on. Can't hear you yet, Mark.
There we go.
There we go. We can hear you now. Go ahead. Well, now we can't hear you, Mark. We lost you again.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right. I was going to try to turn video on, but I will go ahead without video.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark Young. I'm Fire Marshal for the city of Kirkland. And. A lot. I'm trying to get to my. Technology is beating me. Good afternoon, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard today. I'm Mark Young, Fire Marshal from the city of Kirkland. I'm Chair of King County Fire Marshal's Wooly Code Committee. And our committee members worked on the Wausau Wallow Wooly Working Group that produced much of the Washington Wooly Code proposal that's in front of you. In the group two code. Cycle. This code proposal, along with the written public comment from Mr. Chapel, Chappell, sorry, I have a staff member spells the same chapel. On September twenty eighth. That provide additional context and texture necessary for the code officials to successfully implement a statewide wooly code as required by RCW nineteen twenty-seven five sixty. The King County Fire Marshal strongly support the Washington Wooly Code proposal as modified in Mr. Chappell's written testimony from September twenty eighth. Beyond the requirements of the RCW, the proposal. Add scope, administration, definitions and explanatory material from the ICC Model Code. These elements provide clarity for applicants and code officials, but do not add additional cost. Furthermore, the code proposal provides all other options for ignition-resistant construction. As an option, if an applicant wishes to pursue more detailed wildland fire risk analysis. Finally, Mr. Chappell's written testimony submitted on September twenty eighth provides clarification. For the use and application of the DNR wooly map produced as required by the RCW. Together, the Washington Wooly Code proposal and Mr. Chappell's written testimony. Amount to a Washington Wooly Code that can be successfully implemented by code officials across Washington State as required by RCW twenty-seven five sixty.
That's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record, that was for the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Okay, do we have any other public testimony? Kevin, I see your hand raised. Do you have public testimony on something other than the the residential energy code?
I do, yes.
Okay, what would you like to speak on?
On the International Residential Code.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I'm just about to be promoted to a panelist, so I'm going to drop off for a second here.
Okay.
Okay, I'm back.
Okay, Kevin, your time starts now. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin DeWelles, Northwest Natural and Residential Code Tag Member. I wanted to speak about Proposal zero six three. It's regarding kitchen exhaust. And wanted to make a recommended adjustment. That code regarding vent hoods in particular. Should be regulated or should be at least modeled after national or international standards, which in this case would be ASHRAE sixty-two point two. And ASTM E three zero eight seven. Right at this moment, both standards are being revised. They're taking a fresh look at their air quality. They expect to have. A new take. ASHRAE is regarding airflow and ASTM is regarding the efficacy of the hood. They won't be done until probably late twenty twenty-three. So I would like to recommend instead of. Changing the air flows as proposed in the table. Would be table. M one five zero five dot four dot four dot three. To revert or rather keep the existing table, which has a minimum exhaust rate for kitchen range hoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public testimony? Okay, that reaches the conclusion. This hearing is being held to consider testimony on the currently filed. Proposals for WAC fifty-one fifty International Building Code Structural Provisions, WAC fifty-one fifty. International Existing Building Code, WAC fifty-one fifty-one International Residential Code, WAC fifty-one fifty-two International Mechanical Code. WAC fifty-one fifty-two International Fuel Gas Code. WAC fifty-one fifty-five New Washington State Wildland Urban Interface Code. WAC fifty-one fifty-six Uniform Plumbing Code. And WAC fifty-one eleven R Washington State Energy Code Residential Provisions. All testimony presented at this hearing, along with all written comments received today, will be part of the official hearing record for this proposal. A final decision on adopting this rule proposal will be made on November fourth for the WSEC R and November eighteenth for all other codes. On behalf of the SBCC, thank you for participating in this hearing. This hearing stands adjourned at two twenty-two PM.